Being seven o'clock, I'll open the meeting for tonight. We have an A and R for Bracken for H-foot Road. Would you come up and put that for us?
Good evening, Planning Board members. My name is Maurice Bracken, and I'm here concerning the lot. I'm a forty-eight H-foot road, and I'm seeking your approval to have the mere lot line moved, in effect shrinking the lot from a two-acre lot to a one-and-a-half-acre lot. And this is, I'm requesting this in preparation of having the lot ownership transferred.
Okay.
Did they review this?
Yep.
All the requirements are, any comments, questions?
I think we're pretty straightforward.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the A and R plan.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I thank you for your consideration.
Do you guys want to, want to walk up here?
Yeah.
No giant table.
No.
It's a table. for Sunset City, please sign in. If you're here for Sunset.
Thank you again, folks.
Have a great night. Being almost seven oh five, in accordance with Section 200-7 ID and 207-2 of the Charlton zoning bylaw, the Charlton Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, June 6th, 2018, at seven oh five in the Selectman's Meetings Room at George C. McKinstry Building on the application of 508-Base LLC Sunset City, Inc. to, for a modification of a site plan approval to change from a campground and motocross park to a sports, entertainment, and recreation facility for gainful profit. The property is located at 219 Brookfield Road, assesses map fifteen, block B, lot six-nine-eight-eighteen-nine-point-one, and map twenty-nine, block A, lots three, six, eight, and nine. Said property is zoned agricultural. Copies of the site plan application are available for inspection at the Planning Board Office and the Town Clerk's office during regular business hours. Any person interested or wishing to be heard should appear at the time and place designated. Would you like to?
Sure. Good evening. Through the chair, I have two, two documents here with me this evening. One is just a copy of the check submitted for our bond reduction, and then the other is a letter from Jason Quintera with the Fire Department about the dry hydrant being tested, and the results of that from today's pump test. So, if I can just submit those.
Perfect. Thank you.
Well, I'm Russell Jennings with Sunset City, 508 International. With me this evening is my attorney, Donald O'Neil. As folks may or may not know, this whole change of name really comes into play from the settlement agreement that we have made with the town of Charlton to resolve the issues associated with our project being the first time this project, or this type of project, has ever been through zoning in Charlton. Not to get into a lot of the history of this and the why we got here, but this comes from the suggestion from the town's attorney with the name. It matches a lot of the language used in the zoning bylaws, and everyone around the table has felt that this will prevent confusion moving forward, clarify the situation, make it so that we can do business in town the way we intend to run our operation, and in accordance with the zoning bylaws. I think Mike was present for some of these meetings and has some of the understanding which led us to where we are today. So, I think the biggest thing that you will see in all of this is the proposed list of low, medium, and high impacts. This way, we don't, we don't have to make the judgment calls of what's included, what's not, and getting into the discussions with Bill Scanlon, interim town planner, this was a suggestion of his as well as our zoning enforcement officers. He actually, Kurt actually came up with the low, medium, and high designations, if you will. So, I don't know if you want to ask me questions or things as we go along, or if there are certain things you'd like to ask questions about, and I can address those subjects, or...
Mike, everybody here had a chance to review, to take a look at the sheet?
Yeah.
Um, yes. I was just thinking. Russ, can you kind of present to us these plans? I know I was able to come in and take a look, but I don't know if the whole board has.
Okay.
Just what we have here, and so we can kind of have it on record, too. Please.
So, what you have here is Brookfield Road. That's where the entrance is currently. It's a paved hundred-foot apron that comes into the property. It's very much like a subdivision road as you travel in and come all the way in to this point here. From this point, being the closest part of the loop to Brookfield Road, is about 3,000 feet, and the equivalent distance would be roughly, when you come onto Brookfield Road, off of Route 20, if you know where the Mass Pike Underpass is, add 600 feet to that point. And that's this point right here. My mother lives right here. She is the closest person to the property on Brookfield Road. Over here, you would have Sydney Circle, which is a little bit further distance-wise than my mother's house here. Then, over on this side, next to Sullivan Pond, we would have one house there that is about 2,500 feet away from this point right here, which lies over a big hill and down in a valley where the lake is. This here is the access loop that goes around where all of the high and medium impact sports will take place. So, all in this designated area. This is all forested around this, and this is all wetlands in these delineated areas. We are 100 feet or greater off of these wetland areas, with the exception to this one area down here where we did the DVP permit, and that is the last of the work that needs to be completed, which is in that performance bond for the $3,000 item, which is called out in Mr. Andread's report, I believe. So, that's a brief overview of the project. I don't know if you have other questions pertaining to this right here, or...
Um, so, it's on, camera, for the record, this on the plan does a list of high, medium, and low-impact activities that, and this plan kind of just shows where all of these activities are going to occur on the property.
Do you know, Russ, does that agree with what the agreement? I haven't had a chance to go back and forth.
The settlement agreement?
Yeah, the settlement agreement.
Yes.
Does that match what you have on the plans, identical?
It does. I believe it's, it's really called out in, Kurt's, Kurt's the one who reviewed, I believe, for the town, the consistencies between the agreement and what's proposed. The settlement agreement naturally leaves these decisions to the Planning Board. Mr. Andread was also there, so he can probably, and has commented on certain things in regards to just whether or not they conform to the bylaws.
Do we want to, Mike, will you go through your report?
Sure. Madam Chairman, since I came up and...
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right. I know you have a lot on your hands. So, I would suggest that you might want to, for the audience, read the list of activities because they may not have had a chance to review the plans. But an answer to the question is, is that the discussions all along have been one of, what did we do with the list of 50 that was dispensed with a while ago, and what were some sample activities that were broad enough to allow the business to continue, but the community to have an expectation of what like items are there? So, when you read those items, they say something on the top of it, something similar to or like, which is, you know, we don't know, you know? We're dealing with some issues in this community that 25 years ago, we would have never contemplated. And so, you sometimes have to write language that gives you examples, gives me an example, gives the applicant an example of what would be a low-impact activity, so I can tell you that on that list, there's things like, you know, running in the woods, running in the woods with bows and arrows, you know, running in the woods with paintball. What would you call that? Athletic activities in the woods? Something like that. So, that's a bar to measure what activities would be allowed, you know, when we dispense with the list of 50. You know, there were activities on that list that were allowed without any site plan review that got included, and that was, that's contradictory to the zoning and the way we're supposed to act. But, you know, that was a, some sort of era. We worked our way through it, and, you know, it's taken us a while to get here, but I think we're in a good place, and everything I have seen is consistent with the settlement agreement.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Why don't you, then I can check them out.
Just to clarify for the audience and for the record, I will, I'll read the, the activities that are actually specifically mentioned on this plan and that would have locations. For the high-impact activities, motocross?
Can we speak up a little louder?
I'm sorry. Higher, high-impact activities, motocross, mud bog, all-terrain vehicles, utility task vehicles, off-highway vehicles, four-wheel drive vehicles, and snowmobiles. Medium-impact activities, ice skating, hockey sports and activities, boxing and contact sports and activities, cultural festivals and activities, holiday festivals and activities. Low-impact activities, walking, running sports and activities, obstacle and adventure course sports and activities, cycling sports and activities, boarding sports and activities, skiing sports and activities, climbing sports and activities, acrobatic sports and activities, flying disc sports and activities, remote control vehicle activities, archery lumberjack and Highland Games activities, paintball and airsoft sports and activities, inflatable and trampoline sports and activities, volleyball sports and activities, first responder training and activities, bushcraft and survival skill activities, backyard activities, for example, horseshoes, cornhole, horseback riding. Questions?
Do you have Mike over his report? Oh, sorry. Sure. So, you should all have a June 4th letter from me. So, this is a review of the plan that was submitted, and I'll just go, I'll breeze through some of these comments. So, the first comment is just referencing...
Could you introduce yourself?
Mike Andread Graves Engineering, consultant for the Planning Board. So, these plans are, are essentially the same plans that were approved initially with the project. They're not ASBOP plans, so they don't reflect some of the minor field changes that were made on the project with some culvert relocations and minor driveway relocations. And so, the only new item really on this plan is the addition of, you know, this sheet P2 and the activities that, which you just read. Other than that, the plans are the same as what was originally approved. Comment number two is a mistake by me. We can omit that one because I guess that list of 50 was previously discarded, and I I just forgot that point. So, apologies for that. Item number three is more for the board's information on sort of thresholds, if you will, on the original approval with regard to a number of items. A being the number of parking spaces are on-site that hasn't changed. The plan, the plans state that there's 357 parking spaces on the site, and those include oversized spaces 10 by 30 for presumably originally for motocross riders and trailers. So, they aren't changing the parking that's provided on the site from the original approval. And just noting that events such as the Tough Mudder and Spartan Race under the settlement agreement are allowed to take place, provided they prepare a plan for overflow parking for town approval through the police department, I believe. It seems like these types of events and perhaps others will more often not require additional off-site parking, so some of, some of the events you just read is very likely it may need more than 357 spaces they have on-site. That's item A. Item B is regarding the site access. That isn't proposed to change. The main access is still off of Brookfield Road. The original emergency access road, still out to Bon Saw Mill and Ladder Road, that's still stated as emergency use on the plan. That hasn't changed. So, that's B. Item C, regard to the traffic. Board, recall that the original traffic analysis submitted by the applicant was prepared based on a campground use and motocross off-road uses. So, other proposed, proposed uses, site uses may generate more traffic than the previous study, and thus may require board review. Again, some of those categories which you just read, the uses you just read. Item D, relative noise generation. The previous approval was based on motocross bikes, AKA dirt bikes, and as stated in the settlement agreement, should proposed activities utilize louder vehicles, then new noise studies may be warranted. I also point out, one of the conditions in the original board's approval was that this was a seasonal use, April through October, and should motorized winter activities be proposed, for example, snowmobiles, noise propagation can vary from that during normal seasonal use due to snow cover and lack of foliage on trees. So, that's something the board should think about as well on that item. So, that's item three, those four items together. Item four is regarding this large cleared, graded, and gravelled area immediately to the north and west of the track contention, so I'll point it out to the board here on the plan, right across from this area here. I question what that use was. It's prepared as if it's a parking area. I understand that may not be the intended use, and the applicant can speak to that in a minute. My question's on that. If that's parking, it should be designated as parking, it should be, the drainage needs to be designed, which it currently isn't. So, that ties into comment six below. Oh, and just the final comment, I guess, is that the plan should identify that there, this is a site plan modification, and it really doesn't say that anywhere on it. That's basically it. If there's any questions on that? There is a follow-up memo from June 6th, I believe. Find it. Yeah, June 6th. That's regarding the completion of the work on the site. There was some work remaining at the wetland crossing that was kind of been waiting for completion for a little while, and I was out there a couple days ago, and it's substantially complete now with the exception of the wetlands replication work, which the applicant indicated will be done shortly. At the time I was there, the fire pond that they constructed was not yet tested. I have since, and you all have it, too, the email from the Fire Department indicating that I tested that, and they're okay with it. So, the bond that I prepared, which is attached to that memo, can be reduced. That light item for the fire pond can be taken out, you know? So, just the item four, the wetland replication, remains.
Do we have any motion? Do we have anything to leave? Questions from the board? Yes. Through the chair. Russ, would you address the whether you're only going to be seasonal or whether you're going to be year-round?
We definitely would ultimately like to be year-round. At this point in time, we're still seasonal.
Okay.
So...
But we'll be approving this based on the fact that it will be a year-round adventure. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure.
Yep. We just don't, at this point in time, we don't feel that the colder weather months at this point in time are going to be substantial enough for us to run our daily operations. Don't get me wrong, I talked with Chuck Cloutier. One of our plans was to build a six-inch-deep ice skating spot. He loved it. No kids in the lake. This is, this is perfect. Things like that. But again, weather permitting, we don't, we don't know what that's going to bring. Those are the little things that we would like to do during the wintertime. We would like to have some events potentially during the wintertime, not by all means every day of the week or every weekend. Occasionally have an event during the wintertime involving everything on the list, potentially. Huge outdoor snow party, if you would. But again, weather-dependent, hard to plan. You don't know if you're going to get enough snow in January or February, or you might not get any snow at all, or you might be in a reverse situation, have too much snow. So, you know how it is. I don't have to tell you about New England, but we want to leave our options open, but as far as running daily operations during the wintertime, no. That's not our intention.
Thank you. Additional questions?
Yeah, it wasn't clear to me where the, where the parking is designated for, for the site. Is it...
I'm sorry.
The parking is designated for, for these events. That's...
Should we write on that?
It's not clear.
The existing parking?
Yes.
That was approved, so it's sort of oriented around, around the traffic area?
Okay, so it's in the loop area.
Yes.
Correct.
Was this, is this your overflow parking area?
We have...
That, that cleared area over here, is that...
That's correct. Yep. We have used that as overflow parking. That property, since 2014, we, we changed the designation on that piece of property. Back at that point in time, we were going to do hops on that property. Once we got into it, we realized that was, that was a no-go on that property. It was just too rocky, too rough to do hops. The cost of importing soil to do that, just cost prohibitive. At that point in time, we switched over. We went to USDA. We've been dealing with Daniel Lenthal about converting that into a field, doing hay, pumpkins, and corn in that area. So, that process, that property is in process of being leveled off for that purpose. Part of that property, that 17 acres, has the detention basin on it as well, so...
Do you have any contingency plans for overflow parking if you have an event? Look at just say Tough Mudder, Spartan?
Absolutely. Yep. Moving forward, what, what we've done is we've said to the police department, and this was part of our settlement discussions as well. When we have events that concern overflow parking, we're going to do a traffic plan with the police department. There, the guys that we go to, for details. So, that's where we're starting. Also, with fire input from them, we may be using the farmer's fields down the street, our own fields across the street. We may be using the Spencer Fairgrounds. They're all possibilities, and then bussing from there, depending on the event and what the people who are doing at the activity would like to do. So, based off the customer and the event, that would dictate the parking. But it's a traffic plan handled by the police department with the police department for the overflow parking.
The original plan really looked at this as the track and then a campground, and people would stay at the campground, so there's a, when we, where we're thinking that, I think I hear numbers, 5,000, 15,000 of people who attend these events, they're all over the place, you know? I think about the, the idea that we, that the traffic, the original traffic study might kind of be, need to be redone. I'm just looking at your comments, what the, like the, with the original traffic plan to this plan, and the use of the road, and, and I guess the rest of the board can chime in on this. That's my, that's my, this is great. I'm concerned about that huge amount of traffic coming in.
Sure. And understanding that point, I would say that's, that's more event-driven, and when it comes down to it, we're not having an event every weekend. That's just not reasonable. That's not, not what we're doing. And if we were to do a large event, such as the Tough Mudder, or originally, when we go back into the discussion of a large motocross event or something like that, you're lucky to get those events. If they happened once a year, you'd be extremely lucky to get that kind of event at your property. And it doesn't always want to stay at your property because nobody wants to go to the same circus every single year. So, the likelihood of, of large-scale events happening like that with regularity are, are very slim. And I think this is a situation where that's why we've, we've come out and said, with the events, we're going to the police department, and they handle the traffic. You can only park so many cars at the facility. That's, that's the number. That's how many fit. And, you know, if we're to bus people in or something like that, naturally, that greatly reduces the number of cars. Do you have buses? Sure. But instead of having 50 cars, you have one bus. So, that's all, I think, part of the management plan for the property. And traffic flow-wise, daily numbers, we're still, still well below what we talked about, especially with the alternative, and we always go back to this number, of seven times more daily traffic with housing than with what's proposed here. Some, I mean, daily activity, you're looking at 30, 50 cars, you know? Housing is the reasonable statement of seven times... Housing is, the, the reasonable statement of seven times that number is, is ridiculous.
Question through the chair. At what point, if you were to have an event and say that it was going to warrant more than three hundred and fifty cars, at what point are you going to the police to do those traffic studies? What is your breaking point that says, okay, so this event will, this event won't, just for the sake of the butter, so they have a clearer picture of what this looks like?
Uh, when, when we request the detail for traffic.
Perfect, okay. Thank you.
So, and we don't, we don't want there to be a backup in front of our project. We don't want a backup in our project. And one day, in all of our operations, there was. That's been held against us from that one day. That was one day. And we've had discussions about this, how we rectified the situation. It wasn't internally our own team. It was shame on us for letting someone come in and run our house inefficiently so that that happened. But it, it was one day. And that was it. The next day, it didn't happen. At noon time on that day, after three strikes, they were out. We took over the parking, we called the police, we got them down there. We had the detail in the road, and then we had the detail on Sunday. And we ran the parking from then on, and it was not a backup. So at that time, it's very noteworthy that the roadway coming into the project was a single-lane road. So all the traffic flowed into the property and immediately bottlenecked. That was because the roadway wasn't complete in that initial section. Now, we have a three-thousand-foot staging road, conservatively two lanes wide, if not three, going all the way into the property. So then versus now is a night-and-day situation. So to handle the flow and not have the backup. Along with the assistance of, I'll say Charlton's finest, so.
Thank you.
So we, we did get a comment from Mike two about the, the other, the new activities, the winter activities. I guess I'm more concerned with the additional, I guess, and I know very little about motors and stuff. The bigger vehicles, the mud bogging vehicles, because I, I, I've, of course, seen some of the YouTube videos from, they're much bigger vehicles. All-terrain vehicles, so the noise. How often are those big events like that, how often do you plan to have vehicles like that on the property?
The plan, the plan to have that would be once a year. An event of that style. We, there's, again, it's, if we're a situation where you're, you're giving your customers something every single week, eh, yeah, I'll catch it next week. If it's something that, okay, it's going to happen once a year, then, yeah. Then you have a pretty decent turnout, you have people show up. It's worth it for the business. It's worth it for the spectators to come on that day. And, you know, I think, I'm just like pretty much everybody else in this room. I look at Facebook a little bit here and there, and I saw some of the videos that were posted on there. And, you know, I can honestly say that, is it loud at the site? Sure it is. It's loud if you're standing right next to it. But I also know that if we're extremely loud, off-premise, on that day that the video was posted, we'd probably have some noise complaints down at the Board of Health office, which we don't have on that day. So there were no noise complaints on that day. And that is noteworthy because that is, along with motocross, the highest impact. And that's, that's why we've done what we've done. And just as a side note, the location that that happened in, we didn't like the location. Mainly because of the sound and how it could project from that location. It was a high location on the property within that access loop. If we were to do it again within that access loop, it would be moved to a lower section. So learning the venue as we have, now we know better how to use the venue for ourselves and our neighbors. And that's, that's part of this process with tuning in this venue, that this has never been done before. This is a brand-new first of a lot of things for us, for the community, for even all the people involved. And once you do something, you know right away, how are we going to make this better next time? So, and we have learned that.
If, if I could, Don O'Neil, I'm the lawyer for the applicant. The other thing, I think, to keep in mind with respect to the noise is just that there is state regulation in effect, which ultimately you cannot exceed, you know, the limits that are set by the state. And that was always the, sort of the, the line that couldn't be crossed. And, and that's there whether or not, regardless of any condition, you know, that you might impose. So that if there were a situation like that, if you were, did exceed the state limit, then that would be, you know, there would be a problem with that.
Anything else, nobody, before we open it up to the panel?
No.
Yeah, just one, one quick question. So you, you mentioned additional parking along Brookfield Road for some events, is that where you think the overflow will be?
Um, potentially. We've, we've already submitted the traffic plan to the police department. And that has included several sites along Brookfield Road. And it's, it's really not much different than like last year at Fay Mountain Farm, where the overflow parking was at the number-two schoolhouse. And then they did, I don't know if you want to call it hay rides, to Fay Mountain Farm. So, you know, it's not a situation that Fay Mountain Farm requires every single day. It's not going to happen, but maybe once or twice a year. And on those day, on those days, or one of those days, they use the numbers, number-two schoolhouse. Another day might not be busy, and they might, you know, they have plenty of space on their property, so.
Just so that any further traffic studies should keep that in mind, that there will be additional parking along Brookfield Road, which means additional traffic and bussing and things like that, so.
I think.
Kurt has a question. We ran out of chairs. So I did review these, these plans and offer comments to the planning board. I'm sure Mr. Scanlon passed them out to you. I, like Mr. Andre noted, that large gravel area there that does seem suitable for overflow parking, but is not designated on any of the plans as to what its purpose is. And I think it would be helpful for the applicant to definitively indicate what they wanted to use that for because it would bring comfort to myself that there was a large area available for parking. If it was turned into a hay field or some sort of crop field, depending upon what it is, it may or may not be conducive for overflow parking. I also pointed out that there's some area right by Brookfield Road where the old farm building stood, and Mr. Jennings used that for some equipment lay-down and some processing there. That too has the ability possibly to be used for overflow parking, all within their site. So I think it would be, once again, and Russ, you've got those comments, you know, have and take this.
We don't have these comments built and pass them along, so. I would, I would so enjoy if you would go through any specifics that you think that would be.
Well, I'm doing the Cliff Notes version of them. You know, as Mike pointed out, the layout of the road does not match the plan. Yes, we can have it as-built. And I commented that, in addition, the applicant, as Mr. O'Neil pointed out, that these high-impact activities, I struggled with how, how to deal with defining them and whether it was a horsepower thing. And it's not horsepower, it's not size of vehicle, it's the ten decibels over ambient, that is the DEP threshold that is citable by DEP or those qualified to cite that. And I think that's, that's a concern of the community, it's a concern of mine because I'm going to be the one to ask to do something, you know, when, when it goes over. You know, so we didn't, in, in our discussions of settlement, say fifty horsepower because fifty horsepower without a muffler on it is going to give you one noise. Fifty horsepower with the Harley-Davidson muffler on it is going to give you the air pump. And fifty horsepower with a hush muffler is going to give you something else. So the true test is, is that DEP threshold that you can't create any additional noise over ten dB ambient? You know, which we've measured, we've had a sound test that's been measured, that threshold was set. There were some other sound testing done. I'm not conversant with all that sound testing, that's not my area of expertise. I did see the Cliff Notes on it. But that's, you know, the standard that the applicant has to keep with. Not that we're discussing the police detail activity or anything. I have seen the proposed parking plan for this event coming up. It is mentioned in the settlement agreement, and I've been reviewing it, waiting for some certain thresholds to be met, which they report today that have been met, so that we are continuing to meet those thresholds of the settlement agreement. And just the more we put on paper in a reasonable way, it's much easier for, for me to, to interpret or defend, or unfortunately, sometimes I have to prosecute these things. So we don't, I don't want to be there again, I didn't want to be there in the first place, but unfortunately, sometimes I have to put on the big-boy shoes and do things. Those were my comments.
Can I ask a question on that before you leave, Kurt?
Sure.
So at these bigger events, and this might be a question for us too, because I know this question has come up by some of the butters, and I think it's important to address it now. Will there be sound booths on-site to, because I don't know that I would be able to know what ten decibels, whatever the number is, because I don't know that the naked ear would know that. So just for the sake of anybody that's at the event and they see that little meter go up to five-point-seven, nine-point-two, is there something like that for, for everybody?
What, what I will say is, is, you know, when you talk about activities and larger activities, a larger pedestrian activity, I, I don't think you're going to have a sound problem.
No, I just mean the high-impact.
The high-impact activities, I, as I recall, and like I said, I'm not conversant with all the stuff that went through the first site plan. There was some, I think there's required noise testing of the, the bikes that were going to go by, and, and some allowance for that, but I don't believe that there's any continuous noise monitoring required off the property.
No, there is, there is not any required off the property. And bikes, bikes in general in Massachusetts have to conform to a certain noise level. That's, that's just the law. And what, what is, what is the law is, again, going back into what both Kurt and Mr. O'Neil discussed, is the ten-decibel limit. It doesn't, it doesn't matter what the bike is.
I agree completely.
If it violates at, at the residence, it violates. And that could be a bike that is at eighty dB. So that's why, there, there were certain checklists established that we checked off along the way during the site plan review. And we met all of those noise regulations and the standards according to your board.
No, I know you did. And I guess, I'm going to devil's advocate it for a minute. So let's say I'm super-sound-sensitive, and I hear something, and it sounds like it's twelve decibels, but it's actually only five. What protects you from it being, from knowing that it is under ten?
What, what would protect us is that, what would happen in this situation is a complaint would be filed.
Okay.
And then the sound would be tested.
Okay, fair enough.
Here, here comes the, the hard part in this, is someone sitting in their backyard, and, okay, 508 is having an event today, and it involves motorcycles. Now, motorcycles are actually traveling, traveling on the town road, and those are the loud motorcycles. Because we actually had this happen at one of our events. The bikes that were at the property, on the property, were not violating. As soon as they left the property, and they're registered, street-legal bikes, they go down the road and they sound loud going by someone's house. They're Harley-Davidsons.
Right.
You can't hear them on our property, but you can hear them on the street. And some people said, "I heard bikes." That's when you heard them, when they left the property. But that's on a town road. And if someone decides to get loud on a town road, naturally, I have no regulation or authority over that. If they're on our property, absolutely. And we don't want to violate as an organization. We don't, we don't want headaches, we don't want problems.
Thank you, this absolutely is not an accusation. It's just the number-one question that we get as to how we're going to police it. And that's, I just wanted to make sure it was clear for everybody how that would be policed.
Yeah, the, the only thing I would say, just in response to your comment, is the measuring is actually done at the, at the property, edge of the property, not in the, you know, in the event proper.
You wouldn't do it right next to the motorcycle?
That's right, it's going to be loud, yeah.
Yes, thank you.
So I don't know if you can answer this, or Kurt could answer for us, but what is the process? So I'm in a butter. It is so loud, I, I'm in my back, you know, drinking my, my tea. What happens, who do I, I call the police, I call you, and then how does that whole?
Right.
Is, is someone, someone's not driving there and testing? Are they, I'm just curious of how that works, the process?
Absolutely. The Board of Health is very aware of the project. They actually have been given by DEP an instrument to test the sound levels in relationship to the background ambient noise level. So they can make the determination. And your local Board of Health is the approving authority, is the regulatory authority that concerns noise and the noise levels. Because Jim Philbrook, our health agent, is the trained individual who knows how to operate a piece of equipment that will test to determine whether or not someone is violating. Not necessarily ourselves.
Sure.
Because we could be accused of noise that isn't ours. And someone hears something loud, well, it's easy to point the finger and say, "Yeah, what's going on over there?" And in Starbridge, we actually had police lodge complaints of sound violations, accusing 508 of breaking noise levels on a day where we were rained out. So that's exactly what I'm talking about. The qualified individual must come out to where the violation is supposedly occurring, test, and also be able to point the finger in the direction of the noise and say, "It's coming from over there, and that's where X is located." Or, "It's coming from Mr. Clay's loud party tonight." So, and we'll go over and address that. So, and that's, that's his job.
So then what hap, so then they, they come, they test, and if it's loud, then there is a fine, that?
So this is where we get into what I describe as silos of authority. Okay, so the noise ord, noise violations, as Mr. Jennings has pointed out, is a DEP regulation enforced by the local Board of Health. So I wouldn't get involved in that. I would probably be consulted on it because I seem to get consulted on things. But I know Mr. Philbrook and I have had discussions about that, and, and that's where it would have to go. You know, we dealt with this, a noise issue that was in this community. It was caused by a air-conditioning compressor at our town library.
Oh, yes, I remember that.
And, and the Board of Health worked with the library trustees over a period of time to, to try some strategies to mitigate that activity or that, that noise because it was exceeding that ten dB limit. And they were the enforcing authority that was eventually, you know, going to have to say to the library, "You can't run the compressor, and you can't run your air conditioning." But through some fencing and some noise blankets, that, you know, was mitigated. And I think that's what the whole sound study that was done, the testing, the berms that were built, and as opposed to the containers, and all those variables that go into mitigating noise, you know, it's a changing thing. But that's, that's where it goes, it goes to Board of Health and DEP.
So Curtis, would that happen in real-time, or would that happen the following day, following?
Well, that would, that's, that's a reactionary problem. You know, the fire department, the police department, you know, because they're in town, you know, in their emergency response, people arrive rather quickly to complaints and incidents. people arrive rather quickly to complaints and incidents. I don't know what Mr. Philbrook's hours are, you know? I don't know, you know, if he plans on maybe spot monitoring. I, I don't know. You know, and I can't, you know, speak for his availability or where he lives at this point. So, yes, that's a tough question.
So it seems to me it might be feasible to, for the high impact events require some sort of onsite monitoring during at least initial phases of, of each high impact activity.
I don't know about onsite, maybe on call.
Yeah, on call.
On call. If there is a complaint.
I mean, I don't know what we, I, I think we would have to get Philbrook in, let me out.
Yeah, bounce it off.
Vetamoe, yes, agreed.
See what is available.
Because, I mean, I, I think it would, it would also protect you
Exactly.
from, from any issues that you might have, having to come back here for both accusations. So it might be worth it for Mr. Jennings to hire a, an unbiased sound agency to, or testing, to have them onsite during these events just to protect him.
Maybe we can, we can shoot some correspondence over to Board of Health and see what, what they, because I'm sure we're not going to close this tonight. It was probably going to be continued to another meeting. So in the meantime, maybe we can just get some feedback on what, you know, if maybe during the first event, so we can, he could just be available to, to test if.
Agreed.
Or maybe he's always available, I don't know.
But we can find that out and I don't, right.
So we can have some facts for the abutters.
Absolutely. And I know John Sandborn specifically ran for the position on Board of Health to address these issues. I voted for him. And, you know, I know that the board is very aware of the situation. And they have discussed with Mr. Philbrook. And they have a policy in place already, which I'm sure, once you guys contact them, they will make you aware of that if Mr. Philbrook is not available, he is leaving the charge to one of his colleagues being potentially the Starbridge Board of Health agent.
Ah, okay.
So he has a fill-in person because they're already fully aware of that. You know, the phone's going to ring. He has a $10,000 instrument that was given to him by DEP calibrated this year to make sure that it's working correctly. And I can guarantee he will be on scene at some point in time. So definitely ask the question and I'm sure they'll let you know of their procedure.
Thank you. Thank you.
So I'm going to open this up to the public. Please state your name and your address. Please keep your comment to approximately three minutes. This isn't correspondence, so Russ, unless we ask you to ask, answer a question or even if there's a very negative comment, don't, don't reply. We're going to keep this.
Yeah, question only, not emotional.
Please keep the comments and questions to what we're looking at, what's in front of us.
My name, excuse me. My name is Bob Burnell. I live on Brookfield Road. I sent the board an email yesterday. I hope you've all had a chance to read it and in particular, listen to that sound of the race that was, was done last year. And if we're looking for ten decibels over ambient, and ambient, as we all know, is what the normal sound level is, that's a perfect demonstration that it is way over the ambient level. I'm sorry, Mr. Andre, if I'd have known you were here, I would have sent you a, a copy of that email. I'm just going to briefly summarize for the people that didn't get the email. The settlement agreement dated 4/27/18, paragraph two states in part, "The town will support such modification to the site plan, subject to the planning board's ability to require reasonable information and imposing reasonable conditions upon such modifications." Also, under paragraph two A, it states that the site plan review process will involve analysis of parking, egress, ingress, noise impacts, and sanitary facilities. Additionally, under paragraph two E, it states in part, "If louder vehicles are proposed to be used in the track area, the planning board will likely require new studies and peer review regarding noise impacts." Since eight high-impact vehicles have been added to the settlement agreement, of which seven were not on the original site plan, it seems reasonable to require that the town's site consultant be engaged to determine what mitigation is required to comply with the mass DEP noise policy 310 CMR 710. The, the number three thousand feet has been thrown around a couple of times here. It just has, just so happens that noise video, hopefully you've seen or if you've heard, is just approximately three thousand feet. And that was so loud that the resident had to move out to a quieter location. So what I'd like to know at this point, what, what is the status of the conditions that you're going to set as we move forward?
I can answer that we don't know the status of anything and we're discussing that now. So we don't really have an answer.
Right.
When, when we, you know, at the end of the process, we'll have our, the conditions that we've.
Okay, will, will there be another planning board meeting?
Absolutely.
Oh, absolutely. And through the chair, what, your, the concerns that you have, we actually just addressed in regards to that decibel meter. Because really, if they go over, they're going to be shut down. There's, there's a meter, I mean, there's a reader, if you will, by this Board of Health agent who will be onsite. If you call, if you feel they are too loud and you call and you exercise your right to do so, as you should, they'll come out and they'll test. And they will shut them down. So it will not be too loud. It might be, let me rephrase that. It might be too loud for you because it's probably going to be loud, but it won't violate any sort of state regulation. So there will be policies in place. And that's why we're going to talk to the Board of Health agent to see when they're available to make sure, for everybody's sake, that when they're having an event, that that person is available, not the next day, not, let's say it's a Saturday night, we're going to make sure that someone is available to be called to go out to that event and to check it. To make, because it'll keep everybody honest. And they're perfectly willing to do that. They, and that's where we are trying to protect you as the abutters. We can't, to Kurt's point, we cannot regulate what type of vehicles are allowed. We can regulate how loud they are. And that's what our job is to do. And that's what we are going to do. And that's why we're going to continue it so we can talk to the public health agent so that we can protect everybody's best interests. Because Russ doesn't want to be shut down either. He makes no money. If he starts an event at ten and we shut him down at eleven, he's now lost. So it's in everybody's best interest to play by the rules. And that's what we're all trying to do. And by doing so, we protect everybody. So we truly do hear you and we truly do want to do what's best. That's why we're going to continue it so that we can talk to the Board of Health agent.
Okay. Well, with all due respect, the procedure that you just outlined, I went over in detail with the Board of Health agent, all right? And it's, that's a great procedure. The problem is it's reactive and it's not proactive. If we have the town consultant, HMMH, who's very familiar with, with the site, go out there and do the tests on the new proposed vehicles, we would have an idea of what mitigation is required in order to keep that down to below ten percent, ten decibels.
We can't really, we can't force another noise study with vehicles that could or could not
That's correct.
be there in the future. We, we, the applicant did pay for a noise study. And we, we, with the motocross, with the, with the bikes running. And if there is an issue, we, we have to be, we can't be proactive.
No.
We can't just automatically assume that he's, that Russ is going to break the rules.
Correct.
That's just not how the process
No.
works. However, if he does, there's a process in place to correct that.
Yes.
And then, and then we step into
That's correct.
to prevent it in the future.
And by putting all these regulations on, that's us being proactive. That's as proactive as we can be. Because unfortunately, that's like saying, testing to see how fast a Camaro is and then saying, okay, well, we're going to give it a ticket because it could go 120 miles per hour, but it might not. We don't know that the bikes that we test are necessarily going to show up on the date of the event. So we, we unfortunately, this is as proactive as we can be.
Well, through the chair, I, I disagree with you, but nonetheless, that's the way you want to do it. That's the way we'll see it.
It's not the way we want to, it's truly the way we have to.
Well, not necessarily. Because you did issue a, a condition for the, on the site plan that noise testing had to be done, which was done, but it was only done for motocross. Now you've got these other vehicles, one in particular, mud bogging. They don't have any, any mufflers at all. And if you go online and you look at them, big difference. Thank you.
Thank you.
Stephen Chidester, 154 Quonlet Road in Starbridge. Adam, Chair, thank you very much for hearing me and members of the board. Appreciate your time. The first thing I, I wanted to know what the purpose of this meeting was, if, if you were planning to vote on it tonight. And it sounds like the plan is to continue it. So you will still be taking public comments after tonight?
Yes.
Okay, very good. I had planned on just saying a couple of items and I'm speaking on behalf of a number of the residents here. However, in listening to all the discussions, I have a number, more things that I'd like to bring up. There were some excellent questions asked. I think one of the questions was about, you know, is there some kind of meter that's onsite that is going to register, you know, whether they're five decibels or ten decibels or whatever? In fact, a lot of these types of commercial facilities, the planning board will, ahead of time, will require monitoring stations that are placed on the property boundaries that can actually monitor the site continuously. And that way, and if there's, if it ever goes over the limit that's set by DEP, then it sets off an alarm and it says, okay, you violated it this, this date, this time. You know, it was done this many times. You know, so it's a, it gives you a complete record. So that's a way of protecting the community. It's a way of protecting the owner of the facility because he can prove that, you know, his site wasn't in violation or the community can prove that it was in violation. And so, you know, I would suggest that maybe the board consider having some of these, you know, permanent monitoring stations placed on the perimeter of this project. I think that would, that would be a great idea. I also respect, respectfully request that you, you do reengage your sound consultant to ask him about these louder vehicles. Because you, the, the town did hire a consultant and the consultant came in and his recommendation or his conclusion was that even with the motocross, motorbikes, this site is going to exceed mass DEP limits. Okay, that was his conclusion. He said the only way that they would not exceed those is if they implemented extensive sound mitigation. So essentially, they had to put a wall around the entire facility. In fact, when he was asked the question, you know, how do they reduce the sound levels by thirty decibels? He said they, they should put it inside a building. And that's, that's basically how they could reduce the, the sound levels. So unfortunately, that sound mitigation has not been implemented. I'm not sure if it's on the new plans. But if they are not intending to follow the town's peer reviewer and his recommendations to have the sound mitigation put up, you know, I think that that's a problem. They're setting themselves up for failing. Because you can be proactive. You can model sound and that's what you hired this guy to do. And he did. And he came back and said, you know, based on my analysis, this site is going to exceed mass DEP levels. So again, just, I, I would, I would respectfully request that you reengage this consultant and at least get his opinion on the fact that they haven't, you know, implemented the sound mitigation he's already recommended and what's going to happen when they have these louder vehicles. Okay, so that's the first thing. I think the, the community would also feel much better about this if there was an actual plan for how they're going to test. So, so the idea that this, your peer reviewer said, you know, every vehicle that comes into race at this facility or practice at this facility has to go through a sound test. Okay, that was part of the conditions that were put in the original site plan decision. Yeah, I, the sound, there was a sound testing area and each vehicle was to be tested. And the applicant came up with this somewhat arbitrary number of ninety-three decibels was the source sound in a fifty-foot pass-by test. So that sound area, to the best of our knowledge, has not been created, has not been built. We also have some concerns about that and I'd like to raise that in the, in the next hearing. I won't, I won't talk about that right now. But at any rate, I just wanted to make you aware that we would feel much more comfortable if there was an actual plan about how they're going to do this, who's going to do the testing, you know? Who's going to regulate this, whatever, okay? Finally, we would also request that, based on the language in the settlement agreement, that you do, do a new sound study, or, sorry, a new traffic study based on the, even if these events are only one or two times a year, I think it still should be required by the applicant to demonstrate what the impact is going to be on the community. He says that he's going to work with the, you know, police department and have a plan for it, but that, that doesn't mean it's not going to have a, a very significant impact on the community. So you could just make that part of the conditions of your approval, you know, have an additional traffic study done. Okay, so that's, that's the stuff that I wanted to talk about. I also want to correct again something that, that Russ said. The very first event that they held, their, their grand opening, they had this mud bog racing. And it was mentioned by, I think, a couple of members of the board that you saw the, the YouTube videos of the mud bog racers. And it was very dramatic. I was one of the persons that complained, that, that filed a complaint on that day. I didn't, I had no idea what it was that was making this sound. But it was, you know, kind of short duration, but incredibly loud. It sounded like a, a rocket taking off. Didn't know what it was, but I called, this is, this is what I did on the day of the event. I called the Starbridge Police Department. I called the Starbridge Board of Health and I called the Charlton Board of Health. I talked to the Starbridge Police Department. They said it was not their problem and they couldn't do anything about it. I did not get an answer from either the Starbridge Board of Health or the Charlton Board of Health. Two weeks later, there was a Charlton Board of Health meeting. I confronted Mr. Philbrook about the fact that I filed a complaint and nothing was done. No one contacted me. Mr. Philbrook said that, yes, he was out of town. And he had the, he had the sound meter, but he was out of town, so he couldn't respond to the sound complaint. He did, however, come to my house with the Starbridge Board of Health agent on Monday and they sat in my driveway and they couldn't hear anything. So that, that was, that was the reaction or that's basically what happened at a past event where a set, where a noise complaint was filed. That's what happened as, as a result of it. So we just, in the future, we want to have some assurance that that kind of thing isn't going to, isn't going to happen. All right, thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Could I just respond to that briefly? With respect to the sound studies that were done, there was some modeling done. There were recommendations made by one of the consultants. And it was theoretical, basically, modeling. And then we actually did a test and had the monitoring on the property lines. And, and that's kind of the proof in the pudding. Because a lot of the things that he predicted and said you couldn't do, we did do. And the noise didn't exceed the limit. That's how we got the original approval through the site, you know, through the, through the sound test. So that a lot of the things that he was speculating on what the noise would be, it's, you know, it's, and I understand the modeling and so forth, but I, but I think that the model, if, when you have an actual test, that's much better than a model. Because it's reality.
Correct.
And I think the best monitors that you're going to have are the residents. And I'm surprised that Mr. Chidester didn't know that it was opening day for this site, since he attended all of the meetings before the planning board. And I'm sure that he was aware that that was the date that was opening day. So to not know what the noise potentially was coming from and said that he heard. So, to not know what the noise potentially was coming from, and said that he heard, it's surprising.
Can I ask a question?
You don't have to answer this tonight, but for the sake of the abutters, from what
I'm hearing and what I've heard over the past number of years, the largest concern is noise. Traffic taking a second, but noise being the number one absolute. Would you be opposed, and again, I'm not going to put you on the spot tonight, I figure you'll want to talk to your camp, but would you be opposed to putting one of these sound booths on the property? And rather than be reactionary, because I agree, that was a horrible experience, because to come out on a Monday after the event is just, that's not, that's not fair, and that's not what we're striving to do. We're striving to make this nice before they open, because we all want to play nice. Would you be willing to have a sound booth?
Well, we've, the simple answer to that, no. And I'll, I'll tell you why. And I'll get into it as briefly as possible. To start with Mr. Chidester's suggestion of permanent modern, monitoring locations at various properties, the first issue that comes in with those unmanned apparatuses are, you don't know specifically where the noise is coming from. You just don't know.
Fair enough.
Okay? It's picking up sound in a location that could be coming from the street, from the neighbor's house. People can influence those devices.
Sure.
And that's why we paid a lot of money to have not one, but two live sound studies done, at which, the first one, planning board members were in attendance. It was asked of us, boy, we would really like to know what it would sound like. Mr. Lemansky and your chairman at the time, Mr. Starkus, came to those, and when we went to Sydney Circle during this live motocross mock test, Mr. Starkus' grandson was with us, and he said, I don't know what anyone's talking about, Papa, but I can't hear any dirt bikes. And, you know, on that occasion, as well as the mock live test that was done prior to us opening, Mr. Minj, again, it's on camera, it's on our website, we publicized the sound test, so that it would be valid. And to take one huge step back in all of this, and many of you members have been on this board when the project started, you will not recall asking this applicant to do noise testing. You never asked. We volunteered to do it. We said, we're going to do the testing. We paid the money for it, and, you know, it's tens and tens of thousands of dollars. We spent $80,000 on this noise study to prove to your board and to the residents that this fits into the community, and it does not violate. And every single time it's been tested, that's what's, that's what's rung true, and that's what's proven out in live tests and in our modeling. I'm not here to debate Mr. Chidester's personal situation of noise at his house, it's just not, it's not something reasonable that we can all get into, but we do know the Board of Health is a governing authority when it comes to noise. We've taken all the measures, we've taken all the steps, we've completed a checklist established by your board throughout this process, and then some, many more levels above that. It's all been done, it's all been reviewed, it's been gone over. There's, you know, the horse, it's long dead, we've beaten it.
So I think the whole reason we're going to talk to the Board of Health is to make sure that Mr. Chidester's experience is, is not a repeat, that we have a much better reactionary response in place, because, and thank you for sharing that story, because it helps us to know what we need to address, because if we didn't know that that is happening, we don't know. And so we can talk to them and say, okay, well, this experience happened, how do we prevent it in the future? Are you going to ask the police department to cover for you in the event that you're not here, and make sure that we are fully covered? And may, again, just in everybody's best interest, and that's an excellent point, Russ, and I appreciate that, to make sure that that experience is not repeated. So, thank you.
You're welcome. Madam Chair, just a quick rebuttal. Mr. O'Neill stated that I didn't know that this event was taking place, that that's not what I had intended. No, I just, I just want to be clear about, I knew that they were having an event, I knew the noise was coming from the event, I didn't know what was making the noise, because I was not familiar with it, it didn't sound like a motorcycle. I only knew what it was when I viewed the, the Facebook videos that were, you know, posted, so that's how I, I discovered that it was this mud bogging thing.
Through the chair, does anybody else have any comments, please?
No, no, just quickly, the comment about the...
I mean, that, I don't, it doesn't really have very much.
Well, I'm speaking, I'm speaking for many of the residents that are in this room, they can raise their hands, if, thank you. These are the people I'm speaking for.
I'll get one additional minute.
Just, no, I just want to, one, one more comment about the continuous monitoring. You thought that this, you know, made sense, it was a good idea. Russ's complaint was that these can be tampered with, and you don't know where the sound is coming from. This is a very common thing to do at many of these facilities, they have an audio recording so that you can listen to that tells you exactly what the sound is. It's not someone beating a drum next to the, the device, it's, it's actually a motorcycle. So, these are, you know, commonly used devices, and they're specifically designed to monitor, you know, sound that's coming from a facility and to, and to be tamper-proof, so.
Thank you.
Just to address that comment.
No, 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 don't listen.
No.
I can, I can, I can comment on the monitoring if the police department came to me and said, would you do me a favor and have this speed monitor put in your car, and so we can make sure you're not speeding, and you can protect yourself, to make sure that you never ever go over 65 miles an hour on that, on the mass bike? I would say no. Also, so, just, it doesn't make any sense to monitor just in case. If, if there's an issue, there'll be a call, we'll make sure that the Board of Health, we'll correspond with the Board of Health to make sure that there's a process in place to protect the abutters. I, as the chair, I could, I can't, couldn't even ask for, for such, for monitors, and and also before I start thinking about any sort of a noise study, I think that probably we would have a couple of members of this board go up and have, maybe you didn't invite some of your, some of the big trucks up, and we could stand on property lines before we would make any, add any such cost to the project.
I would agree.
So, any other comments?
Orin Cisco, 38 North Sullivan Road, I believe I'm the closest house to the motocross track, is that correct?
2,500 feet, I see.
Yeah. How much buffer do you have between my property and yours?
Right, right conjoined?
Conjoined.
Our properties meet.
So you have no buffer. He's basically cleared all the way to the stone wall, abutting my property. The outhouses are right along my boundary. I don't know how many outhouses he's going to have during these large people events, but I, considering all the acres they have to work with, I'd like to see them outhouses moved away from my boundary. I don't wish to smell them when I'm up there working. That's one item. The trash, all the papers and crap that, that blow across, the prevailing wind blows to my property, what are you folks going to do to keep all of his trash off my property from blowing over? Am I going to get any assurances? I don't want to hear that on Earth Day, you're going to send some people up to pick it up. I don't want it there to begin with. You have a auditorium on solar farms, and the fencing and the sight of them and the setback, I'd like to see a fence between our properties. He has all these people coming on his property to these paid events, what's stopping them from stepping over that stone wall? And in some places, there isn't even a wall. What's keeping them from coming on my property? What's that wooden jungle gym thing there with the, with the pegs you climb across with your hands? That's sitting right against my stone wall. Can I get, can I suggest that maybe he has to put up a fence to contain everybody and keep them off my property?
Yes.
Russ, what's going on with, what, what do we have a trash containment up there?
There is no issue with trash at our property.
There is definitely an issue with trash.
What the issue is, is a longstanding navelly issue.
What goes, what does the trash get thrown in?
We have, we have trash bins.
Are they?
Everywhere.
Big dumpsters covered, like the recycled bins that we have out there, are they just regular trash baskets?
There are trash bins with the lids on them, some have the holes in them for recycling, some are just standard trash bins, all have the covers on them, they get taken in and emptied every single day if there's trash in them. There is, there, if you were to drive up to, up to that site, there is no issue with trash at our site.
So, there's a huge, a huge event, there's people, there's staff that monitor this and, and empty those, and?
Absolutely.
Is there a dumpster up there?
Yes, yep. When we get a dumpster, when we have an event, we get a dumpster, we fill a dumpster, and it leaves the site, so.
How many people are expected at these large showing events? How many people are you expecting to see on the event?
Well, the attendance is...
Approximately.
You can correct me, anywhere from a couple hundred to a couple of thousand, correct?
A couple thousand people dropping napkins and potato chip bags when the wind's blowing into my property? How many of them blow across, they never even make the bin?
Let's just, let's...
What's that, Woodstock, 1920?
All right, no comments.
They're closing themselves, too.
Just, hold.
That's great.
So, trash is an issue.
I want to live in.
Sir, please.
Trash is an issue. It's not an on-issue. I walked around my property all day, and the pictures of them all that I saw are walking around the stone wall. They've come so close with the machinery clearing up.
Sir, just, so, we have a problem.
There's no sanitary, there's no dumpsters, there's no...
Please. I, I will have you removed, just, so, the issues are outhouses and trash, so...
So far, I have more on my list.
Let, let, give me one second. So, we will, trash will be a further discussion, we'll, we'll discuss that in a minute. The outhouses, the, the, the issues with the outhouses, we'll also have that on our list as something that we'll...
Address.
Discuss further.
And what about the jungle gym thing that's, that's right up against the stone wall where they climb rung to ring, rung to rung?
So you're asking, you're asking for some fencing to, to divide the property?
Why does it need to be right against the stone wall? Why can't he put it 50 feet away?
We can't, we can't force him to move it, but we can, we can force a fence. So, is that what you're asking for? Are you asking for a fence to...
I want it moved, the, the people are going to be over that wall, they're going to be on my property, you can't have that right on the wall.
I'm going to note it for discussion, and I, we can't, we, we can, we can ask him to voluntarily move it, but we can, we can require a fence.
All right, let's jump to something else. The noise thing, 10 decibels, that's what, what you can increase? Isn't that all based on what, what, what the, the normal?
Yes.
Decibel level is?
Yes.
Ambient sound.
Yep.
So who tests for the normal level?
Well, we've just been...
It's already been done.
Yeah, I was going to say, we've done that, we've done that years. That was done years ago.
Know what the normal level is, to know if it's 10 decibels too high?
We've spent the last hour and a half talking about noise.
All right, sir, we've, we've just spent so much time talking about noise, we know that it's on our, it's on our...
Yeah, but this is a whole different event. If he shows up and the, and the noise level is here, how does he know?
Then the Board of Health will...
Where it started from?
Then the Board of Health will come in with their monitoring level, and they will shut them down.
Do you have other, we're all over, we're all over noise, any other concerns that...
Well, I have another whole noise issue. You have one monitor, what if you get 125 calls all at once? Where's that guy going? He can't do all of them in one day.
It's one site.
It's one site, so he'll be going to Sunset, the 508 International.
He'll go to Sunset and test, he'll come to my house and test?
He would go around, he would go around the outside, the perimeter and, and test.
That's correct.
There are, I am, I'm sure there's procedures in place, and once we talk to...
Exactly. The Board of Health?
The Board of Health will get that clarified.
We'll readdress that at the next meeting.
Okay, what about tone? You're talking about decibel, doesn't the state have something to do with tone?
We're going to discuss all of that at the next meeting after we've had a chance to talk to the Board of Health and really clarified exactly how that's laid out, because what we don't want to do is give you false information tonight. So, I'd like to table the noise discussions only because we want to make sure that we're giving accurate information, and hopefully we can get someone from the Board of Health to help us through this.
I would strongly request a fence between our properties to keep all these people off of my land.
It's a reasonable request.
We haven't noted, and it's in the minutes, and it's something that we will certainly discuss.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Additional comments?
I make the motion, we continue.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do we need a time and a date? A date? Do we have, is that, wait a minute, June 20th, is that?
That's the pop form.
Yeah, let's not, I'm sorry. We're getting too, too many things here, and it's dragging.
I was just thinking, right? We were not, I'm, I'm not going to pop them on Sunset, I'm saying that it'll be here until 2:00.
Right, no, so what's the meeting after that, July is what, July 8?
But we have, but we have that in our one in July?
Do you want to do a July pending the other place doesn't cancel?
So we're down to the one meeting in one, aren't we?
Yeah, we're going to just do it in the first meeting in July, because the next one is the marijuana farm.
The one meeting in July.
Yeah, too much.
Asking for too much.
Is it the first, the first meeting in July?
So we're going to continue this to the first meeting in July?
The only meeting in July.
The only meeting in July at this time.
But I don't have my first...
The first one stay in July is the 4/4.
No, 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 we only have, so we only have one meeting during the summer, one in July.
11th, okay, July 11th. We did. We closed it, we closed it, we closed it.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Let's give them a second. Hopefully these next ones are boring.
Yeah. Yeah, the Ramson.
What is this? Oh, where is it? I'll be right back. Do you Ramson Road? All right, we're up.
We're just discussing what the next meeting is, so. Is there a bunch of people in the hallway, do you want me to let them know we're moving onto Ramson? I don't know.
This gentleman right here, the engineer's right here on the right.
Is it a public hearing for Ramson?
Yeah.
So if anyone's here for the Ramson Road public hearing, we're going to ask that you please sign in, and I will grab a pen, to be very helpful.
Absolutely.
Yep, that's...
So, they're going to need the presentation.
You got two more.
Oh, I'm sorry. You just took my, you took the thing. Agenda.
If you just come in, you're here for the Ramson Road public hearing, if you please sign in.
Just make sure that I'm not in the water here, I own property, I mean, it's for... What number Ramson is this, do we know? This one in the show. James? Hey Dawn, will you just have the engineer come in for one second there? Can I ask you, just ask, I want to ask a quick question. What, what number house lots are these? Like, if I was driving down Ramson, what numbers are, are these, do you know?
55 in the rear.
Fifty-five in the rear, and then sixty-one right here, and then.
I just wanna make sure, I own one oh six, and I just wanted to make sure that I wasn't in a butter.
Okay.
Um, in accordance with section two hundred dash five, um, point one-three and two hundred dash seven point two G of Charlton zoning by law, the Charlton Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, June sixth, at seven twenty, in the Planning Board office, in the George McKinstry Building. On the application of Michael Barch, fifty-five Ramson Road Charlton, mass for approval of one reduced frontage lot containing approximately thirteen acres, thirteen point four-three acres, which has an existing single-family home, the property is located at fifty-five Ramson Road Charlton Mass, identified as Assessor's Map eighty-three, block A, lot one, and is in the, in agricultural district. Copies of the reduced frontage lot, special permit application are available for inspection at the Planning Board office and town clerk's office during regular business hours, any person interested or wishing to be heard should appear at the time and place designated.
My name is Zachary Les, I'm from existing grain, I'm the surveyor for the site, and I'm representing Michael Barch, who lives at fifty-five Ramson Road. And, the current site that he owns is just over fifteen acres, and it currently has two sections of frontage along Ramson Road. We have a fifty-foot section, um, to the north, and then currently there's another section of frontage to the south that has a hundred seventy-five, just over a hundred seventy-five feet of frontage. And what we're proposing to do is create the lot in the rear as a reduced frontage lot so that we can subdivide later down the line, create lot one. Lot two in the rear meets all the requirements for a reduced frontage lot, we do have the fifty feet of frontage, the access for the driveway to get to the rear, where he currently does have a driveway to access the rear now. It is less than the required six hundred feet, and the residential structure that's built on the lot is over the two hundred foot setback that's required. And then, the only other real item that we've addressed is that I put a note on there stating that that lot cannot be further subdivided again according to the zoning by laws. Both lots do meet the required uplands, we have, yeah, the wetlands that delineate your four, we're gonna be doing lot one to ensure that's gonna be a valuable lot, and then, the remaining land in the rear has well over the required forty thousand square feet.
But, are you building on two separate places?
The, the lot in the rear right now.
Right.
It currently has a residential structure on it, which is fifty-five Ramson, and this lot, one right here, is currently, uh, part of the lot that we're gonna be subdividing off once, after we actually get approved for the reduced frontage.
So, right, right now, there's one lot, he has the fifty-foot access which his current driveway is on, which accesses his house.
Goes back to there.
And, so, to build this house, he used the frontage that he's using for this lot one that's identified.
You can see it on the overall site plan, we currently gain access through this strip right now, and this parcel is currently a part of this.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, so they're just breaking that off.
And then, we're gonna be, after this, we'll be coming back for ANR to subdivide off lot one here, once this has been addressed for the special permit.
They'll review all this, and?
Yeah, yeah, meets, it meets all the criteria. And it's, it serves the purpose that what the bylaws writes, as far as your just frontage.
Do you have a motion?
Make a motion to approve the, um.
Do you want a public hearing?
Oh, sorry, do we have public comments, sorry?
You do. So, I am March Conley.
Come on up.
I am March Conley, I am at fifty-seven Ramson Road, their driveway goes around my property, it is the fifty-foot driveway that you see in the angle there. This one. So, my property is right there.
Okay, thank you.
And it wraps around.
Okay.
My property, and my concern is, I know that he stated the bylaws do not prevent further subdivision, but that is a thirteen-acre lot, and if they subdivide that again, now I've got multiple families going right around my property into my, through my backyard, almost.
It clearly says shall not be further subdivided on the, on the plans, so he cannot.
But it's not on a deed, so, if it's not on the deed and it's on the planning board, how easily is it for you to over-change your bylaws and, and allow subdivisions like that?
Oh, no, what?
Can you answer?
So, Kurt Meskis, zoning enforcement officer, building commissioner, um, because it's recorded on a deed, on a, on a plan that's filed at the Registry of Deeds, that anyone who did any title research at all would see that. And it would prohibit them from dividing that lot further. Also, the building official and zoning enforcement officer looks at all applications for building permits, and looks at these issues to see if the lot is conforming, non-conforming, or buildable at the time of application.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, to answer your question, they can't.
Other comments, questions?
I make a motion to accept the subdivision plan.
We don't have to close the public hearing.
Oh, I make a motion to close the public hearing first.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now I make a motion to accept the subdivision plan. I meant the, yeah, the law reduction, sorry.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, well, we're doing that, if you're here for Colburn Road.
Yep.
Would you please sign this one?
I'm so bad at this.
There's no Mylar?
We need to ask him, yeah, I'm sorry. But don't, shouldn't we have?
We should have Mylar.
Yeah. Do, can you just, did he walk out? Let me go find him. Yeah, we don't have a Mylar.
He'll be bringing in an ANR. If he's gonna pass the sign.
So, we'll be able to.
And that will be the Mylar. But I don't, I don't have any of this. So, are you getting that right? No, I need this.
Yeah.
He was, or he needed one for a special permit.
He'll be bringing.
Yeah.
He'll be bringing an ANR.
Yes, after the appeal period, I'll be doing the ANR.
Yep.
Everybody needs to sign this anyways. Yep, yep. You need to sign it? In accordance with MGL, chapter forty-one, section eighty-one dash T in the Charlton Planning Board subdivision regulations, section three point three point one-two, the Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, June sixth, two thousand and eighteen, at seven twenty-five. On the application of Daniel S. and Holly A. Stevens, one oh seven Colburn Road, Charlton Mass, one oh five oh seven, requesting approval of a definitive subdivision plan. The proposed subdivision consists of two lots and a cul-de-sac roadway eight hundred and fifteen feet in length, the applicant has requested several waivers of the board's regulations, the proposed subdivision is located at one oh seven Colburn, um, Charlton Mass, one oh five oh seven, Assessor's Map fifty-seven, block A, parcel nineteen, said property is zoned agricultural. Copies of the definitive subdivision plan are available for inspection at the Planning Board office and town clerk's office during regular business hours, any person interested or wishing to be heard should appear at the time and place designated.
Good evening, uh, Ernie Mello from Zero Point Development, so, just some background, and I have, uh, Jay Boy as well, from DC Engineering, um, some background on, on how we got to here, really, the purpose of the subdivision here is for the following hearing, because the property's planned to have an array, a solar array, uh, currently is proposed here, it's a, a, a planning board, uh, process as well, so. The purpose of the subdivision was due to an issue that came up, um, in zoning, a provision that's in the bylaws about, uh, frontage for multiple principal uses. So, the fact that the landowner has his home here and had a certain amount of frontage, uh, there wasn't enough left over to do the solar in the back, so, the point of this subdivision is to create the frontage for the array in the back, so, that's why we're requesting a number of waivers to basically build a road to what we had proposed to do in the site plans for the solar array. We came in, we met with, uh, the town planner and the building commissioner, and kinda strategized and thought this was the best way to resolve the issue of zoning, of, of the frontage, so, um, that's some background, we, we had, did have some revisions through, uh, the town's engineering reviewer on just some issues with the subdivision plan, but again, it's, it's really just subdivide off the house lot from the solar lot and creates more frontage to do multiple principal uses. He has, yeah, a hundred twenty-seven acre property with a, you know, a single-family home on it, so, um, we thought it was reasonable, it's gonna remain as a private road, um, and again, there's multiple requests for waivers to basically build the road not to, you know, your typical subdivision standards, but to what we're proposing to do to improve it for the solar array. I don't know, Jay, you had any, you know, any comments you wanted to address as far as engineering review, but it was pretty, pretty standard.
I mean, did you want me to go over kind of the gist of what we did, or, or do you want, you know, kind of do a brief overview of the law?
You can give us the brief.
Okay.
Um, so, this is an area that kind of shows, that it's pretty brutal. The frontage was down here on Colburn Road, and it didn't have, you know, enough frontage for both principal uses, so, we basically, um, are proposing a definitive subdivision which would create more frontage for both lots. Uh, this rear lot would end up with a hundred and six acres, and then the front lot where the house currently is, has just over twenty acres, and both properties would then, you know, with approval of this definitive subdivision, have the required one hundred seventy-five feet of frontage. But just the waivers is, is basically just, we're not looking to make this a actual, you know, paved subdivision road, we just wanna keep it the way it is, um, you know, it is gonna be improved to like a fifteen-foot wide gravel driveway, um, but it would still, you know, keep the, the same access to the existing house, and it would tail off here to head up into the development for the solar field.
Mike, is there anything specific that?
So, we've done, uh, um, two reviews on this, uh, project, and, uh, my most recent letter is dated today, uh, June sixth, and, uh, most of the comments have been worked through, I'll just point out a couple things. We had a comment about, um, the existing tree line, the proposed tree line, uh, they aren't showing a proposed tree line, so my, my, my presumption is that they're not doing any clearing for this, these roadway improvements, and they're, they're pretty minor, they take, basically, the, the existing driveway staying as it is, wherever it's not fifteen feet, they're gonna make it fifteen feet wide, um, so it does meander a bit within the right-of-way, um, and if they're not doing tree clearing, I think the plan just need to state that, there's no proposed tree clearing for that work, um, so that's, uh, comment number eight. Uh, and comment number ten, and this kinda is in concert with the solar project what we'll discuss in a minute, is about a turnaround, um, and whether the, and this is more to the fire department, whether they feel a turnaround is needed within the bulb of the right-of-way, so at the end of this proposed private right-of-way, or if the turnaround, which is going to be further in the site for the solar project, is, is sufficient enough for, for the proposed use. Um, I don't know if the fire department has commented on that particular issue yet, I haven't seen any comments on them. So, that's really all, all the technical comments I have remaining on this project, again, there are a number of waivers that are on the cover sheet there that you, you might wanna discuss individually, however you wanna do it, uh, but does, it does require a, a great number of waivers from the typical subdivision road reconstruction standards.
Can I ask more of a technical question, Mike, and I think this is probably more for you than anybody, um, so, obviously, this is all being done for solar, so in twenty, thirty, forty, fifty years, let's pretend they pull the solar panels off and they actually want a subdivision, is there anything on the plan that says they have to revisit us to actually make this in compliance? Since we are approving?
They would have to construct the road to the current standards of the time, which would involve quite a bit of work.
Okay. 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 Thank you.
I see Kurt sitting, maybe he has a comment about the fire, the fire department chief.
Hi, Kurt Meskis, uh, zoning enforcement officer, building commissioner, and acting on behalf of the fire chief with his authorization to review these plans. The fire department has no concern with a turnaround at the, uh, that the cul-de-sac, so-called, there, there is a turnaround, uh, further up, and there's turnaround ability at the, uh, solar field. Um, I did, in technical meetings with, uh, the applicant, uh, Mr. Scanlon, I think Mr. Ande attended those, uh, that meeting too, um, but I've been to so many meetings, I forget who came, um, did recommend that as part of the decision, um, a condition be placed that if any new development was to be made, um, to either parcel, that it would come back. Because it's possible, uh, as you suggest, that in a number of years, that solar comes, comes away, and that a second house or some other, um, thing be put there, so, um, I did discuss that at that technical meeting, and I know Mr. Scanlon, uh, took some notes, so I think that you should make that part of your, uh, decision, that, uh, any, any change to this plan, come back to the planning board for further review, and then that way, it's, gets documented in the decision, it gets into the registry of deeds with the decision, and, you know, when I'm not here remembering these things.
We just make it cleaner.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any que- questions, comments?
No.
Do we have questions?
My name's Mary Paul, I live on Parker Chel, I'm just trying to visualize how far the, in, in this goes, from Colburn to Parker Chel.
Do we open?
And there's a brook, so, is it, if you're on Colburn Road, is it to the right of the brook or the left of the brook?
I believe the brook is what you're seeing here, so it's to the right, and it basically is, you won't notice any actual changes, it's basically kind of just, the subdivision itself kind of exists on paper, and the improvements to the road are gonna be where the existing driveway is.
But how about that solar?
The solar is in a, is in the next public hearing, so we can probably discuss that.
What's?
I'm just wondering, if it's behind my house, that's all, do you know the numbers on Parker Chel?
Yeah, and, and. Um, there's about, there's about four houses, but I, again, in a minute, when we close this, we're gonna open it up for the actual solar here, and we'll probably discuss all that stuff, I just, I, I assume the board would like to.
Right.
I have two questions.
I'll, I'll.
We're, we're meant to talk about solar right now.
Alright, so we have to not talk solar, we have to, this.
So, can you just tell me where that's going to be though, like, what houses are in front of it, not the solar, but that?
Yep.
Not the solar.
Not the solar.
So, the driveway is, is existing already.
Right.
That's already there, that's, there's no changes to that driveway.
A question, how can a subdivision be a subdivision if it's not a subdivision?
And if it's just a driveway that's already there, that just doesn't make sense.
That's already there. Doesn't make any sense to me at all.
The technicality.
I was just gonna say, it's a technicality to get around that allows them to do a solar array, it, it's more just verbiage and language, and that's why they're putting so many conditions on, so that if they ever decided to come back and change it from something other than solar, um, we did that for the butters' sake, so that way, if they wanted to come, not that I think they would, but if they wanted to come, put a fifty-house subdivision on there, now, everybody has to come back, we send out new notices, and they can't do anything different than what they're proposing without revisiting, um, and getting new approvals.
So, right now?
How can a commercial solar plant be put in a residential agricultural area?
Can we hold off with the solar?
Yeah, we can't talk solar, we're not talking solar.
So, what about, though, um, since it's just a driveway, there's no other houses going in, the subdivision sounds like two houses.
Nope.
Does he have a better plan?
It is two lots, though.
It is two lots, so what, what will go on these, the second lot, either now or future?
The solar is on the second one, so the first one is.
Which we're not talking about until this.
So, can we just go ahead and close this?
Yeah, let's close this so that we can.
What do we wanna talk about, the actual, what we're, like, the actual subdivision plan, not solar, let's talk about that. Um, do we have questions about the actual subdivision plan excluding the solar piece? Do we have questions about the actual subdivision plan excluding the solar piece?
Yes.
Come on up.
You can name an address please.
My name is John Diallo, I live in ninety-nine Colburn Road. I own one oh one Colburn Road, I have claim on the land that directly abuts the driveway. And I have a concern if they put improvements to the driveway, how it affects the water. Because that empties into the South Child reservoir. When they put their driveway in when they built the house fifteen years ago, that pond was muck. So there's got to be, if there's going to be improvements, they've got to protect the water.
Basically the driveway is, is pretty much what it's going to be. It's already varying between thirteen, fourteen, fifteen feet wide up gravel. And the shoulders of the driveway are already pretty much dirt. So there's really not going to be any change in, any runoff.
Perfect, thank you.
They're not planning on paving it?
No.
Left half, nothing?
No widening?
There's not a whole lot of work actually being done.
Right.
But there's also, you have to understand that there's a river that begins from, that empties from the swamp to the pond. And there's a river that ends, so there's a two hundred foot buffer too.
And so you're aware as well, we are, this, this plan and all of the work associated with the project is going through the conservation commission as well, where they look specifically for the buffers from wetlands and make sure there's no impact to them, so.
Okay, I have one other question. Should they decide to put a subdivision in down the road, don't they have to have two ways in and out?
They need to start over from the beginning and they would have to submit a whole new set of plans and then they would come in front of us.
That's my understanding, they need another way out.
You can't say what's going to be?
No.
Yeah, we don't know, I mean, we, at this point, we get, we get some, this thirty years of this.
I'm good, I'm just sort of probably going to camp out here now.
Any other?
So this is my first.
Name, I'm sorry, just, just for the record. An address?
So this is my first meeting, do we vote on this, are we just, what are we doing?
No, you.
Who votes on it, you, you just hear what we have to say and then you vote?
Exactly. So I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
All right, if you are here for the Colburn solar array, please sign this one, where did the sign off?
Do you want to continue this?
Yeah. We close the public hearing, but we need to continue. We need Bill, we can't. We need Bill, we don't have, we don't have Bill to, we don't have a plan. We don't have a plan right now.
I'd like to make a motion to continue the public hearing on the definitive subdivision plan then.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
We'll be continuing to.
That's the next one.
June twentieth. Um, I'm sorry, just, I, I think we all feel uncomfortable without having our, even our interim planner here to, to go ahead and approve something. And just, we just want to do everything right by the books and have somebody who can. I apologize, I.
We didn't know he was going on vacation.
Yeah, it was, it was a surprise, so.
Let's talk solar.
So this is tabled, is that what you said?
No.
Continued.
Continued told next.
The subdivision.
Continued to the twentieth.
Hearing is closed, and this hearing is closed.
The subdivision hearing is continued, but closed.
We closed it and then we continued it to our next meeting. I'm sorry, we just, we have to do things, we have to make sure we do things the right way.
Yeah, the timing is important.
Are we able to discuss any of it or?
So now we're going to move on to the solar piece.
Oh, all right, yes, okay.
In accordance with sections two hundred dash seven point one and two hundred dash seven point two of the Charlton zoning bylaw, the Charlton Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, March twenty-first. Today. June sixth, on the application of zero-point development, three oh nine East County Road, Rutland, Mass. For site plan approval to construct a ground-mounted solar array to produce an estimated twenty point zero megawatts of energy on property located at one oh seven Colburn Road.
Two point zero or you said twenty point zero?
Two point zero.
Two point zero, okay.
The property is owned by Daniel and Holly Stevens, one oh seven Colburn Road, Charlton, Mass. The area subject to the application contains approximately one hundred and twenty-eight point one five acres and is situated on Assessor's Parcel, map fifty-seven, block A, lot nineteen. Said property is zoned agricultural. Copies of the site plan application are available for inspection at the planning board office and the town clerk's office during regular business hours. Any person interested or wishing to be heard should appear at the time and place designated.
Madam Chair, the reason that you have the March twenty-first date on that, this is a continuation of a hearing that started back in March.
I make a motion to open the public hearing.
Sorry, I've been opened if it was continued, so.
Again, Ernie Mel, for the record, Ernie Mel from Zero Point. Before we get started, just, I don't mean to be disrespectful, but I just would like to ask, does the board have any intention of voting on this matter tonight? Because the way I see it, based on the last meeting, if the board's going to continue because a member is missing, there's no sense in the discussion tonight?
A member isn't missing, it's actually our director.
The pla- the town planner.
So, I mean, I'm planning, so.
But if there's, if there's no, if there's no intention of closing and having a vote tonight, I would, you know, I would request to continue to not, you know, not open it up and get into the discussion tonight, but we're going to have to re, excuse me, reopen it at the next meeting.
All right, how do you feel, how do you guys, you still have the same stance like you did with pointability for conditions and stuff like that?
If they're asking for continuance, I'd say give it to them.
We are open and would like to close tonight, as we mentioned, the timing for the project is important. We feel like we're in a position to do that, it's just, if we're going to make the presentation, we'd like to be able to.
What do you think?
If I may, I would just point out that, you know, I don't have many comments left, this is the third review now we've done on this project. But a couple of the comments have to do with screening, which they haven't, still haven't proposed anything in the plan and there may be some, maybe some abutters that want to talk to that a bit more. And they may, they may need to do something between now and the next hearing about that, depending what the board discusses. So I would suggest a discussion about that at, at a minimum, if they're open to it, rather than.
So at the next meeting, we can be a hundred percent sure that we're, we're, we're good, does that make sense?
Yeah, that's fine.
Do we, so we'll discuss our, any comments, then we'll make sure that.
We'll go over Mike's comments.
And we'll go over.
Kirsten, then we can open it up.
Do you want to take any public comment, are you on the table? Okay, okay, I got you, I hear you, Ernie.
So let's have Mike go over any, any remaining open items and then we'll take the public comments to make sure we've addressed everything we should address and maybe wrap everything up and then the next meeting, it's just
A vote.
A vote to get, and get you out of here. And again, I apologize, I just want to make sure that we do everything correctly.
Okay, so I really just have three kind of items here, and one, and Kurt's still at the table, so that's good, is about, we talked about turnaround, the subdivision portion not being necessary there. The turnaround they're proposing now, and I don't know if you can see it on that plan, is basically within the existing driveway of the house that's remaining and that's about four hundred feet from where the gate to the solar array is. And typically on a solar project, we've seen the turnaround has been right at the gate, so they can stage in that area. So I just, I would ask that the fire department comment on that, if they felt that the proposed turnaround where it is being four hundred feet away from the gate is still adequate or not.
So I have not seen the latest iteration of these plans and as I recall, there was a turnaround at the gate at one point.
Yeah, there isn't.
Well, I, you know, like I say, I've been to a lot of meetings and looked at a lot of plans lately, so. So the fire department definitely would require a turnaround at the gate suitable for our largest engine to, to maneuver around. It's a standard detail that we see on all the solar projects. Because we do have to stage and assess the situation when we get there. Thank you for pointing that out, Mr. Andre, did I, did I miss that one?
Okay, and the other two comments are on screening and, and one is on, if you recall, there's an electric line that runs out to.
Partridge Hill Road.
To Partridge Hill Road, that's, terminates in a, some sort of equipment pad on, on an easement or right-of-way on someone's property and there was discussion at the last hearing about screening of that, of what they could maybe do and, or not do based on the electric company's requirements. They haven't, I'm just pointing out the plans don't show anything now for screening on that. So that's one area of screening, and the other is on the portion of, the easily portion of the site, which the tree line is about, proposed to be about ten feet from the common property line from several of the residences. There was some discussion on possibly doing some screening there too and just pointing out the plans don't show anything in that area either.
Thank you.
Sorry? Uh, so thirty-five and thirty-six.
So I can talk a little bit about the screening up there.
Perfect.
I think you're talking about this area on this.
Yes.
So basically, this, this is the fence line that you can see, which is probably about eighty feet or a hundred feet in to the property. Anything outside the fence line is not going to be, you know, cut to the ground and graded and seeded, it's going to basically just be topped. So I don't know what the typical height is that they top those, but is it?
It's probably fifteen feet.
Yeah, so there's still going to be fifteen feet of the tree left, which I'm sure that's going to be sprout, you know, shoots that are going to come off and it is going to vegetate. And also to point out to me, there is about four hundred feet or more of vegetation of, you know, thick woods and tiny houses already to the property.
Just to clarify, to Mike's point, the ten feet is coming, is being left on the property of the array and, you know, the leased area property. So there's ten feet of buffer there. But in reality, to the homes, there's, you know, close to five hundred feet of distance of wooded, you know, forest between the property line and the homes. So they really shouldn't, you know, unless they go and cut down every tree in their backyard, should not see the array through that, that distance with that vegetation.
What about the electricity pad on that, young ladies?
So the electricity pad, I did some research, I know after the last meeting, I did some research, clarified the size of it basically is about five feet high, similar to what I said on, on the last meeting. It's about five feet high, six to seven feet long and about three to four feet wide. And it has some standard electrical setbacks, you don't want to put trees or shrubs right next to these things and it's built in a cabinet where the doors have to open.
Okay.
So it needs to, which is locked by the way, that's how it's contained. So the fence, you know, we had discussed putting a fence up there, you know, it, it's, it's a locked cabinet, it's not exposed to anybody going in there. But there are some setbacks which are about five feet on the back and the size of that fifteen feet where the door is open. So with the twenty, the, the right-of-way being about twenty feet, that would push the screening back out to the abutting properties, which we're willing to do. You know, I don't know if the, if the board's open to it, I mean, if the landowners are open to it, we're certainly willing to talk to them. The board would like us to put a condition in to say when we visit it, once it's built and look at it, have a meeting with the landowners and, and agree to something, but we will meet the landowner's permission to plant that screening on their property because there's not enough room to do it within the right-of-way.
Well, see, since we're, since we're continuing, maybe you guys can work that out, so we're, we're finalized before the next meeting.
What?
The, any screening that, what there's, did you understand what?
What, when you say screening, what is it exactly?
Screening is ways to block the view into the array.
Right, but what do you think?
I'm sorry, hold on, I just have an open, I'm sorry. How do we want, how do we want to do this? I was, before the next meeting, could you contact the, especially the, the young lady that had, that had the big complaint about this being, you know, right in her side yard, to maybe on her property, put some screening to, so she's not looking at a big gray box.
I can do my best to reach out, I, I spoken to her and provided my information and I haven't heard back from her, so I, I will make an attempt.
Okay, that's all we can ask you to do.
Whether she wants to hear me out or not is up to her. But I will, yeah.
I have a question through the chair, is the right-of-way on the, the property line or is it all on one property and?
The right-of-way is on one specific property.
It's on one specific property, okay, so.
It's twenty feet from the property line in.
Okay, okay, and it goes right up to the property line, so the abutter may have.
Correct.
Other concerns too, is, is what I'm saying, so it isn't just one lot, it's, is it two lots?
Yeah, it's, it's really, it's, it's between two, if you think of it that way.
It's spread under the, the border to lots, so I don't know if the other abutters is here.
Yeah, I haven't heard anything from them.
That's the only other concern, is they may not be aware of what's going on, have they been contacted? Do they need to get people?
And again, there, there's, there's some vegetation that hopefully will be left there. You know, the intention's not to come in and clear that whole thing, we're just going to cut where we need to trench. We're doing the underground electrical, you know, you guys understand the size of the box, it's, it's not, you know, it's there, I'm not going to dismiss it, it's there, but hopefully there'll be some existing vegetation. Anything that's left on the tree, on the property line, on the landowner's side, will be left, obviously we can't cut those down. But we'll certainly try to use whatever we can to maintain the natural look of it.
So does the right-of-way also permit ground mon- ground-mounted equipment or is it just?
Specific, it's a specific easement.
It's a specific easement.
If I may, I actually have a, I have a few things to hand out, just because of that question. So one of them is a little unrelated, but is something that I have meant to share with the board. It's a notarized statement from the landowner that allows us as Zero Point, with the applicant of the project, this was a requirement from the peer review, so, so that I'd like to submit. The other document that I have is an easement that the landowners, the Stevens, who are the beneficiaries of the array and the right-of-way, they have recorded, it's, it's with National Grid, that includes, it gives them the right, it's an easement deed that gives them the right to run electricity from Partridge Hill Road using the twenty-foot right-of-way. This, I've highlighted some language in here for the board to, to review on their own time, but it basically gives them the right to construct, repair, inspect, maintain, upgrade, operate any electrical lines and also the right to cut trees, underbrush roots and obstructions to maintain those. So it's recorded, it's with Mass Electrical, owns National Grid and the landowner's name.
Like I said, the only question I would have is, is it, does it cover ground-mounted equipment too or is it just underground utilities or, or overhead utilities?
I'm not sure it makes the distinction, to be honest, but I would you take a look. Thanks, Matt.
Now, maybe we can read this before the next.
Sure.
So I'll take some questions and comments from the public. Please, just please state your name and your address and. Come up to the mic please so we can.
Michelle McAdie at seventy-eight Partridge Hill. So I'm clearly the one who's mostly being affected by this, there's actually the other land abutter as well. So even more so, knowing that this box is even more intrusive than what was initially planned, I can honestly say that I'm not okay with that. I've, I have plans to, like, the way that Partridge Hill is, it's like a very narrow country road, you guys know this. It's horrendous in the winter, so we actually park in that side yard, like, like that's where people park. And I plan on, you know, extending my driveway, there's use all the way up until that land that there's just no way a box is going there. Another thing too is, actually the other abutting landowner and myself, we've actually reviewed documents of the covenants of the land on Partridge Hill and it actually, we have a date showing that the right-of-way, it's not an. of the covenants of the land on Partridge Hill and it actually, we have a date showing that the right-of-way, it's not an easement, it's a right-of-way, was actually expired in two thousand and two. It was a thirty-year granted right-of-way and there's, there's actually, there's actually terms in the covenants that explain it's for non-commercial use only. So that's information that I'm aware of, that I actually have seen through the Partridge Hill Foundation. So that's some information that came to me over the last few weeks. I don't know, you know, if, if the homework was done on the landscape of this property, but as far as the vegetation that's being discussed, there's obviously thickly settled woods all the way back. My understanding is the trench is going to be going all, like, literally from the side yard completely back all the way to the solar farm. And there's, like, I, I took pictures, it's like so thickly settled, there's so many trees involved. There's also a creek that I know that other, other abutting houses on this, you know, the few houses that are affected. A lot of us are very concerned about the stream back there and how it's going to affect that, I know that this conservation committee has been involved. I also know that there was some trespassing done to do that conservation test, I was never notified of anything. So this, this whole project is, is really confusing to me as to just the landscape and everything and how this, how they think equipment can be there. I just don't understand how it can be done.
Do you have any of the, the documents that you think that are expired or not?
Well, this new deed is two thousand and five, she's saying, so they obviously re-upped it in two thousand and five.
So the, the new deed was, was renewed, so it...
In two thousand and five, so even though the deed that you're looking at expired, the new deed, the new easement was put in place in two thousand and five and unfortunately, and I'm not trying to be insensitive, but the land you're speaking of is still owned by Mr. Stevens for the sake of the electricity and it is in record. And he is unfortunately, for, he does have the right or they have the right to put those cables and all necessary poles, conduits, foundations, anchors, guys versus fittings, terminals, equipment on that easement.
Okay, I would like a copy of that.
Sure.
That would be fantastic, thank you. But my other, my other point in regards to the, the, this electric box, that's like really taking up my, my property. Like, I understand that there's this right-of-way and, you know, I, I will keep looking further into it and making sure it's still active and that that use is, is, you know, properly done. But as far as putting that on my yard, I mean, that's, that's completely taking up my property, that I purchased this home, I worked very hard for my property and it's just not going to happen.
So it's gonna, it's, it's, it's gonna happen and so what we're trying...
Well, the box can go somewhere else, is my point.
So, Madam Chair, I'm, I'm going to suggest to the, to the neighbor here that, that she hire competent legal counsel to assist her with this because this is a, a matter of legal standing and the rights that were vested in deeds and things that happened a long time ago. You have done some work apparently, but I'm not a lawyer, I don't pretend to be a lawyer, but I know enough to say often that a lawyer is, is what needs to be consulted in a situation like this. If the applicant is correct and the easement right-of-way is there and it grants them the right to pass, repass, lay wires, pipes or other things, they can do that. And, but you should hear that from a legal counsel and I'm sure that, you know, zero point, I brought this issue up early in this operation, that I, I had done some little cursory research on the, this easement and suggested that the applicant be sure that this, this was still a valid easement and what it allowed him to do and that's what they have told, told this board and stuff. There are often our disputes, but sometimes it takes a little horsepower to, to make sure that both sides are satisfied, that they are being correctly served.
In the meantime, would you be willing to meet and discuss options, should the legality piece be on their side, could, to make sure that, because they're willing to put up some screenings, some trees, whatever, on, on your property to, just aesthetically look better?
I mean, I'd be willing to talk about that. I have a lot more homework to do and it's, that's fine. But I, the only thing I, I am going to say is that I won't allow it to take up any more outside of this twenty-foot right-of-way. So I don't know if that's means that there's, when we look at all this, that there's another placement for it. But I, I can't have it taking up any more of my land. And it, how is this not part of the temporary moratorium?
So the answer to that is, is that this project was filed long before the moratorium was contemplated.
Okay. All right, well, June twentieth.
And so I would, I would suggest that you, before then...
Yes.
You meet and have, figure out what would, what's going to happen. So we can, because we will be making a decision on June twentieth.
And once we close this, your negotiating power pretty much dies. So if you work with them beforehand and we can put it into the plan that you, they're going to work with you, they're going to put it at a set location, da-da-da-da-da-da, it's the way everybody's satisfied and I realize it's not the best solution and quite frankly, it stinks for you. But if it is legal and it is the only, I mean, if they can legally do it, let's have them legally do it in the best possible spot for you.
My other question is, say this were to continue or happen. You had mentioned in the last meeting the timeframe and that, I think you said something as silly as it would only be like a three-day thing, that you'd be doing this trench. I think that that's where my point is, that it's almost like you're in, you know, for another silly term, like la-la land because it's, there's a lot of trees to clear and it's, I don't understand how it would only be the few days, you know what I mean?
Yep, understood, and, and we don't, we don't know, to be honest with you, how long it's going to take. So I'm, I'm not sure where the three days came from, if we said that, it's probably, you know, it's a mistake of ours. But it's not something that's going to take six months, you know, it's a trench, conduit, underground electrical, backfilled and seeded. Yes, there will be some trees that probably will have to be taken down.
What about in the woods behind, like getting your equipment back there and, like, I, I had asked that question and I think a lot of people were confused by that, like, as to where you would be parking the equipment and all that. That wasn't my point, my point was, there's, it, it's like, it's a hill going down, there's like, it's, the landscape is, is, you know, very hilly and then there's the creek, how is the creek not going to be affected, because that's a big thing that I know that we all love and all the trees, you know, not only for my land, but the other neighbor who's here.
Conservation will, will take care of all of, that, that's not something to be discussing here.
Okay.
And just add one other thing too, because I do sympathize and I understand your concerns and I'm just saying again, according to the, to the easement deed, we have the right and we're, and we're trying to be sympathetic and that's why we're running it underground as opposed to what we always do, which is cheaper for us and, and legal for us to do, which is to run overhead poles, like utility poles. We've chose not to do that, to make sure that we're, we're not have, constructing poles on your property line. So we're trying like our best to make sure that you're unaffected as much as we can. But National Grid does require that that box is a certain distance from the road, so they can access it. So that's the rationale as to why that got there. And everything else that we've done has been in order to ensure that, you know, your lifestyle is, is impacted in the minimal amount as possible. So I, I get it, I'm just saying I get it and we can meet out there and look at it. I think the best thing to do is just be to, to put it up and then to look at it when it's done, I mean, we can, we can promise some things, but you never know how it's going to work out.
So I guess our question was all the vehicles, that all of the equipment will be parked on the, on your property?
Where?
So this is going to be an active construction site while we're working on it.
Who's driveway?
Yeah, vehicular access is always going to be coming from the pole road, there's not going to be trucks driving here.
Can, so one person at a time, so I...
Go ahead, the officials to one.
I mean, my, my question is, because there's, it, it's like a forest back there, it's so thick. How, how do you like get, how are you planning on driving this, these machines through and stuff?
This whole, this whole area is going to be clear cut. Those trees are going to be cut at the base, scrubbed, the stumps are coming up and it's going to be graded to put the panels on. So that, one of the first phases of the project is going to be cleared. So there'll be staging points for trucks to drive in there, it'll be wide open. So the trucks will be able to park right at the far end of the right-of-way and kind of work their way down the street, clearing what they need to and digging a trench. Once the trench is fully open, there'll be, you know, some sand put down, some conduit put down, okay, with electric in it. And then it will be backfilled and seeded. But yes, there will be some trees that will probably have to come down along this right-of-way in order to get the trenching, to get the machinery that needs to dig the trench down the right-of-ways. There won't be anything past the twenty feet. And it will be, you know, honestly, it will be the least amount we need, we're not going to clear any more than we need, so...
So you're working that way up, is that what you're talking about?
Yes, I...
And that's why the vehicles would be able to make their way, because it's clearing and clearing and just going that way? So, okay. I was under the impression that you're going from the other way and I was like, how is that going to happen?
No, yeah, that seems to be, I mean, I can't guarantee it, I just, I'm thinking what's...
That makes the most, that makes the most logic, but I, I thought you were saying the other way in the last meeting, so that's why I was so confused. Okay. Thank you.
I was just wondering, is it?
Yeah.
Oh, you want to sit here?
Name and address.
I'll address the microphone so all the folks at home can hear you.
Are we on TV?
Yes, live.
Merrick Camasi, one or two package, you wrote, town to mass. So I'm just wondering, has the Board of Health reviewed this with the solar panels? Are there any problems with all this electricity or anything?
That would be an awesome question for the Board of Health.
Well, I, I know that this has been going on more than once, so I was wondering if anybody brought this up in the past. That's all I'm asking.
Many times?
Many, 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 many times.
The Board of Health will have all your answers, I'm sure they would love to hear from you.
Okay.
We're not trying to be dismissive, that's just, we control where it goes and how it goes, they control stuff like that. Much like conservation controls water, we get to look at how the, how it's all set up and that's, that's really our purview.
So if something, if something should come up with the Board of Health, do they consult with you? Or is it up to us to come back to you and say, the Board of Health said this? Just curious.
So let, let me suggest this, that I authored a multi-page document that's on the town website that talks about solar in Charlestown. And during that research, I uncovered some state research on certain questions of health effects from the energy from these and that's linked within that document. The one thing that I've heard brought up and is brought up in those documents is EMF, which is electromechanical force, which is how we made electromagnets in grammar school, remember wrapping wire around? Okay, so you have a couple of things going here. One, these are underground conduits, so the ground isn't going to act as some shielding. There are power lines on the street that are emitting this force and the fields themselves are DC, so they don't emit as, as much force and from what I recall reading in that document, the force is negligible at the fence line. Now, this is all documentation that was done by the state, it wasn't what I made up and they did their research and cite several many articles about that. I know that EMF is a, is a debated topic like many other topics of, of health concern, but that's where the state, the electrical code and the industry vest their view in.
Now, if I'm not mistaken, this solar panel is on Route twenty, on the corner of Richardson Corner Road.
Yes.
So the reception on a radio is terrible when you, when you start driving down there on Richardson Corner Road. No, seriously, so, you know, I'm just wondering how your daily living will be with reception and everything with, with all of that electromagnetic force running around in the backyard. And I just, um... It's somewhere we could, I'll, I don't know.
Yes, and I mean, there's plenty of solar hills, I'm sure you have friends that live near them and that's a good question for them. We have a bunch in town that could tell you about the radio. I don't, I, I honestly can't give you an answer for, for that. And with all the questions you have, I would certainly contact the Board of Health and I'm sure they can answer more.
Far more thoroughly than we could.
And then they contact you.
Only if they see a problem.
If there's a problem, the building's very well connected.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Tanya Mahon from eighty Partridge Hill Road and I'm just confused on one point. When we purchased our property, we have a deed, there's a collection of homes that are part of Partridge Hill Association. It's my understanding from the earlier discussion that Mr. Stevens' right-of-way expired in two thousand and two and was then reinstated in two thousand and five. How does that not fall under those contingencies and stipulations in the deed? Because that right-of-way is on land that is part of Partridge Hill Association and it says in that deed that no portion of land shall be used for commercial purposes. And the solar farm is a commercial purpose, it's not for personal electricity.
On the new deed, that portion was omitted.
It was allowed to override what was in place for those properties. So Michelle could not use her property for commercial purposes, but this right-of-way, Mr. Stevens doesn't?
Not for commercial purposes, just for, he can use it, he, unfortunately, and Micah, you can correct me on this, solar falls under its own category. Unlike everything else, solar through the state of mass has its very own category that makes it able to go into these residential areas as we've all heard, as all the abutters have seen and as such, and Kurt, or Mike, you can correct me, but unfortunately, even if it did say not for commercial, it technically, it, it's in a special little category that overrides that.
Okay, thank you.
Tim Ferguson, one twenty-nine Colburn Road. And my question is, do you have a decommissioning policy in, in place?
Absolutely.
And could you make us aware of what it is? And if there's a bond that's taken for it?
Yes, so our engineer calculates the amount of cost it would take to take the... Oh, you calculate, I'm sorry, you, the, the engineer, their engineers calculate and then ours, we use the calculation and there is a, a bond that...
So how do they, how do they decommission them? When the time comes, those things are full of cadium, very hazardous.
I'll let you guys answer that question.
We haven't done any decommissioning yet, but the plan would be to basically everything like kind of just screws on with, with the typical hardware.
Where are you going to get rid of the panels? Where are you going to get rid of the panels, Mr. Stevens? Because they're probably going to end up in you, that you own them.
Dan, Dan won't own them, we, we will, we will own them or whoever buys the array will own the array and will be responsible for recycling them or disposing of them.
And you'll put up a bond to protect Mr. Stevens from this, right? So he doesn't get hurt.
Yes, the town will hold a bond.
Yes.
And, and if, if, if they walk away from the project...
How much is the bond for?
It is calculated by the engineers and reviewed by our engineer.
And what is it now?
What is the average one? I mean, they're all, it's, it's all based on the price, whatever, whatever it is, will, will have that. It depends all on the size to...
And is there going to be an operation and maintenance procedure in effect?
Yes, there is.
And how often will they come in and check out these panels?
Ernie?
I think it's monthly, I, I can't remember off the top of my head, I think it's monthly, do you know? The actual panels are sold. I assume you talked about the mowing, like the mowing?
Not the mowing.
No, the maintenance.
The maintenance of the panels themselves, I'm not worried about the mowing, I'm worried about the cadium. If that gets in the groundwater, my well is gone. We all have wells in that area. We also have Charlton Reservoir, which people, that'll take water out of as well.
Understood. The monitoring of the array is like basically done continuously, it can be monitored, monitored...
To who?
What's happening?
Who are they, who are they, who's monitoring?
Whoever owns the, the panel, there's a long-term company that owns, an asset panel.
So what you're doing is you're putting them on Mr. Stevens' property and then you're selling the panels off?
Yes, we sell the whole system. Some of which we maintain partial ownership on, some...
National Grid agreed to buy the power... National Grid agreed to buy the power out of there?
Yes.
Do you have a document that says that, Mr. Stevens?
Um, that's.
Yes, sorry, that's, that's not part of our, our, our plan, that's.
No, no.
Our purview here.
Well, there's two power plants in Killingly that they refuse to buy the power.
Then that would be their financial loss.
Exactly.
So, then.
So, on a smaller basis, this could possibly happen to you.
I have a beware.
Yes.
That's, that's not our purview, and that's their financial, um, issue. Any other questions?
Um, I think that'll do it for now.
Thank you.
But we'll have fa- questions in the future.
Sure.
You do realize that there's a lot of hazardous waste right there. There's a lot of drinking water.
I know, and it's highly regulated by the state also.
Yes, I deal with it. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else?
I'd like to make a motion, we continue, in here.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
June twentieth. Will you guys just make sure that you, you, so we don't have that, so, you know, put some pretty trees up for her or whatever.
It'd be a pretty crowing, too.
We don't have anything.
Is this your stuff?
All right.
Oh, geez.
All right, so anybody who's here for Treehouse? All right, so, we are on to Treehouse Public Hearing, if you are here for Treehouse, please sign in.
Who do I have, I have a letter to read for Treehouse.
These times are approximate.
Yeah.
Play is at six forty, yeah, eight forty-five.
But Treehouse is first, right? But didn't you have, well, from the file department, um, I mean, the, the.
May I circulate that in the first?
Hi, how are you?
Yeah, I'm all right.
All right.
Do you mind circulating?
I do not. I do, yeah.
In accordance with section two hundred dash three point two, two hundred dash seven point one D, and two hundred dash seven point two of the Charlton zoning bylaw, the Charlton Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, June sixth, two thousand eighteen, at eight o'clock PM in the Selectman's Meeting Room in the George McKinstry Building, thirty-seven Main Street, Charlton, Mass. On the application of Land Row Realty LLC, one hundred and twenty-nine Sturbridge Road, Charlton, Mass, for a special permit and site plan approval to expand the Treehouse Brewing Company facility with additional retail space, a timber-framed pavilion, an outdoor beer garden, and sixty new paved parking spaces. The property is located at one twenty-nine Sturbridge Road, Route twenty, assesses map thirty-two, block B, parcel three. Said property is zone Business Enterprise Park. Copies of the special permit and site plan application are available for inspection at the Planning Board Office and the Town Clerk's Office during regular business hours. Any person interested or wishing to be heard should appear at the time and place designated.
Please present.
Good evening, my name's David Feist, I'm the project civil engineer with McLaure Engineering. With me tonight, also, is Rob Lucier with McLaure Engineering, Peter Webster, the project architect, Sean Kelly with Vaness Associates, the traffic engineer, as well as the applicant, Damian Hudrow, and Kim Golansky with Treehouse Brewing Company. Um, and just to start, I guess I'll give a brief overview of the project, uh, have the architect give an overview of the building, and then also have the traffic engineer give a brief discussion, um, on his project. Uh, to start, to go over the project, um, a few years back, we had, um, a special permit and site plan granted for the project. All of the work with that was complete, and the project, um, was opened last year in July, um, just about a year ago, in two thousand seventeen. The current expansion plans, in order to sort of improve, uh, the conditions on the site, and add some additional parking, um, the advocate's proposing to add interior addition, addition to the mezzanine area to create some more space inside the existing building, as well as a, a exterior building addition on the outside to increase the square footage of retail area, um, where you can buy beer, as well as providing an outdoor beer garden, um, to sort of complement the existing timber-framed pavilion and the outdoor seating area, um, for the facility. With that, um, in order, it sort of increases their parking demand. Also, the project, we're proposing, um, an additional parking area off the rear of the existing parking to provide an exi- an additional, approximately a hundred and thirty-four, the, uh, capacity of a hundred and thirty-four parking spaces. We'd like to propose basically in two phases. Initially, to construct sixty parking spaces, paved parking area, with an additional area of seventy-four, which will basically be graded, constructed, um, and then just basically planted as grass, and left that way, just in case in the future the parking demands actually require the construction of that. We've also proposed stormwater controls, best management practices, and an additional stormwater basin to accommodate that additional parking area. With that, the stormwater controls actually are sized, um, for the future build-out, um, of all a hundred and thirty-four spaces, even though we're only proposing to pave the sixty at this point in time. There's no question, but I'll just give a sort of a close-up view. Basically, the existing building, um, sits there now, the existing addition in the back that Peter will discuss, and in a minute, we'll go on the addition, the side of the building, it's currently a grass area between the pavilion and the existing building. Um, we already met with conservation tonight, we're requesting amendment to the order of conditions, as there's an intermittent stream that runs along the back of the property, and also several vernal pools, um, surround the parking areas. Um, with that, the drainage from this, the area currently all flows towards the side of the building. Um, there'll be some new area drains, which will basically continue to route that drainage around the building, and then discharge down into the wooded area in front of the existing building. With that, um, in order to access the back, because this area in front here is already constructed, um, we'll be proposing basically temporary construction access, then we'll root through the side here. Part of it does run into sort of the, um, BEP zone side yard. Upon completion of the project, that will be returned to grass, um, and landscaped as it is now. And the dirt will need it for a temporary access. On the parking lot side, again, the intermittent stream runs along the back, um, and there's also a vernal pool, um, down in the lower part here. Um, under the stormwater management regulations, in order to treat the parking lot, we have a series of deep sump, put-in-catch basins, which will drain into a water quality unit to help get the eighty percent TSS removal. Then it'll discharge as a steep rain hill that comes from here. We'll have a riprap swale that runs down the hill, um, to a stormwater basin with a four bay, and a discharge pipe that'll discharge to the wooded area down in the back. Because the vernal pools are considered a critical area, um, we're required to keep both the detention basin, as well as the discharge a hundred feet away from that, um, per the stormwater management regulations. We've received comments from Graves Engineering on the drainage design and the site plans. Um, currently, some of the, um, comments, um, I believe will address, um, in the next round of revisions. Um, some of the main, really the, they're fairly minor, but one of the recommendations is we'll add some check dams along the swale running down the hill, to help mitigate some of the, the flow coming down the hill, as well as additional riprap in the four bay area, to help, uh, prevent any erosion that might occur, 'cause there is a steep slope going down there. Uh, with that, I'd like to have, introduce Peter Webster to discuss, um, the addition, um, and then we'll take questions at the end.
Hello, I'm Peter Webster, Austin Design, uh, project engineer, project manager. So, we have the basic, uh, perspective you listed here, where the existing building is here in the gray at the back, um, the new addition is an extension of the building here. This is the existing timber-framed pavilion, and there are a series of other pergolas and other sheltered outdoor areas for people to, uh, relax in. And this is a, a basic floor plan with, with a, existing brewery is here. Um, it has the walkway that currently extends down, and offices are located here on the mezzanine. So this gray area is the extended building, and the office section is gonna be pulled to the back. Um, and then this whole area will be opened up for customers, um, to have access for views to the brewery, and also, um, when, uh, times are busy, there's long lines, and so the effort is to reduce that line. Uh, the timeframe that people are, are occupying the place, so they're sort of against, we have a turnover in parking, and it'll alleviate any, uh, traffic issues every twenty. Uh, so, we pose a bar with, allows some samples, and also a larger area for cans, so people can pick up the products and get on their way. Um, this is the existing timber frame outside, and again, a couple of pergolas, these are beer gardens, so people can, uh, sit outside and enjoy the sunset and the beer.
Thank you.
Uh, good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Uh, for the record, my name's Sean Kelly, the traffic engineer with Vaness Associates. On behalf of the project team, um, thank you again for having us tonight. Our firm's role in this project has been to develop a, a traffic and parking management plan. And if it pleased the board, maybe, but I'd like to just walk through some of the elements we've introduced already, and, and some of the effects that we've seen. There really, there were, there were three components to plan, two that are already in place, and one that we're proposing as part of the project. Um, the first involves onsite measures, um, really deal with operation of the facility, how we can kind of spread the, the traffic out, so it's not as, as, um, focused in one particular area. So, uh, the brewery has expanded their hours, they've gone from a four o'clock opening to a twelve o'clock opening. They've also expanded their days, where they were open four days to five days. So those two measures have, have kind of dispersed the traffic, so they're seeing less peak hour loadings than they had previously. Um, in terms of the onsite operations, they're also using staff to direct traffic. Uh, when we get into the facility on busy days now, uh, employees are directing traffic into the back if, if there's available parking, going to the gravel field in the front. Um, again, another measure is to have that gravel field, um, for overflow parking. So, that's really what's been done in terms of operations, to try to lessen the traffic flow and, and, and reduce those, those peak flows. In terms of, um, measures along Route twenty itself, we, we worked in concert with Vaness DOT, and also with the town, with the client. Um, and what we've done is we, we've put up some signage, I'm sure if you've been out, that you've seen it. Um, approaching the site, about a half mile away in both directions, our Route twenty now, there's signage saying, uh, half mile ahead, vehicles turning, to, to alert people. And then when you get within a thousand, you go to the driveway, there's actually variable message signs, very large signs, saying traffic turning a thousand feet ahead. So, um, those two measures were, were introduced to let people know, coming either eastbound or westbound, that, that there are turning movements, and to be aware of it. Um, there were some concerns about, uh, left turn, illegal left turn maneuvers coming out of the driveway. We've added additional signage, uh, additional no-left-turn signs on the opposite side of Route twenty. We've added more right-turn-only signs on the driveway. I was up to this evening, they actually, even, they're using cones now, it actually physically prohibits you from making that left turn. So, you're actually forced to make a right onto Route twenty eastbound. Um, I don't wanna steal the police department's thunder, but I, my understanding is that in the, the six months since these improvements have gone into place, that the, the crashes have actually dropped by seventy-five percent at the location of the driver, so we, we do feel they're working. Um, and the third piece really, we feel is, is the, in terms of improving traffic and parking, is the, is the project itself, it's the introduction of the new parking spaces within the site. Um, I, ideally, you know, this, this gravel lot that's being used is overflow, um, you know, they'd like to use it as, as frequently as possible, and instead have the customer experience closer to the brewery, it's a closer walking distance, it makes more sense. And furthermore, when you have issues in terms of queuing, when cars are coming into the site, the gravel lot is located fairly close to Route twenty, which allows for spillback into the highway. Moving the traffic up further into the site gives you the entire driveway to allow inbound queuing. It's just a safer plan, it's a, it's a better plan traffic operation-wise. Um, and, and that's really what we've done to date. We are collecting more information relative to traffic impacts, relative to parking, and we will have to do with the filing with the state with both NEPA and Vaness DOT. Um, as part of that process, should there be any other, um, measures that, that appear appropriate, we certainly would recommend them. Um, but for now, you know, based on the data we've, we've seen from the police department, and from the measures in place, it, it does appear that the safety, uh, has been improved substantially. That's really all I have to say, if you have any questions, we'd have to answer them.
Yeah, I, that's, sorry. Wait, can I speak? You will. Sorry. Um, let's go through, um, Greaves and Michael, if you'll go through, please.
Sure, thank you. So, you should have a May twenty-ninth, uh, letter from me. Um, as far as this, this site work is, uh, um, as far as the site work is concerned, this project is relatively straightforward, so you see, I don't have a lot of comments. I don't know that it really warrants discussion on any of them other than one. Um, most of them are minor, and Mr. Feist already touched on some of the stormwater, um, uh, elements that he'll be addressing. And we spoke on the phone about these comments as well. Uh, but comment number one, I think, you know, their intent is to construct this parking lot in two phases. I'd like to see that second phase on, that second phase designed on the plan, they're not showing that yet. It's basically just, you see the rough layout of it, but you don't see the parking, you don't see the landscaping. Um, so if their intent is to have both of these phases permitted now, they ought to show that and delineate it as a second phase to be constructed at a later date, just so we can fully vet all the details of it. And so they can, they can, they can comment on that, whether that's the, their plan, or they wanna come back at a later date with another plan, which I assume they don't wanna do. So that's really the only comment, um, that really warrants any discussion. Again, the other comments are, are fa- fairly minor. We can certainly talk about it in more detail if you like.
Do you wanna, do you wanna address that one?
Yeah, I mean, actually, the intent is, uh, basically to build the sixty spaces, but yeah, we'll just provide another sheet, that'll just have the details of what this, the full build-out, along with the trees, as well as the lighting. Uh, we can provide that, just for the revised submission.
Thank you. So, we have a letter from the Charlton Police Department, and I, it's not very long, so I'll just, um.
I can speak to that, I'm Officer Richard McGrath of the John Police.
Oh, perfect, perfect, perfect.
Uh, Chief asked me to, to come forward, and actually, I compiled the statistics. Uh, in the first five and a half months, they, they've been in operation for eleven months. So, we divided it in half, the first five and a half months, from the beginning of July through halfway through December, we had booked twelve motor vehicle accidents, yeah, in or at that site, based on vehicles that were either exiting or churning into the site. And the second five and a half months, which just ended in the end of May, we've only booked three. In that time period, ourselves, uh, we've issued ninety-one citations, whether they be warnings or, or, uh, money fines in regards to, uh, people traveling on that road. Some night, are not specifically in turning, there are some people who were coming down as fast as seventy-five and eighty miles an hour eastbound prior to that area. So we're trying to obviously reduce the speeds of the vehicles, as well as, uh, deal with any kind of problems with turning movements that may create a hazard. Uh, between, uh, I don't know what the state police have done, but they have been out there as well. Mas DOT has erected the no-turn signs, both coming out of the driveway, and a sign that prohibits left turns into the driveways of Zorbas and the old Emrec, um, driveway. People still continue to do so, that's why we get ninety-one citations. Zorbas themselves, uh, periodically have put up a snow fence to help mitigate the traffic churning into the east driveway that they have on their site, as well as Treehouse, as they have stated, have put up the signs about churning movements. That has reduced, uh, the accidents from the first five and a half months to the second five and a half months by seventy-five percent, from twelve to three. During that same ti- or during this last six months, or five and a half months, that we've just had, actually, five months, excuse me, motor vehicle accidents in the town overall have increased by twelve percent. So although we are having, uh, an increase from, uh, the first five months of last year, uh, there were a hundred and sixty-four accidents, we are now at a hundred and eighty-four for the same time period. While our traffic accidents town-wide have increased by twelve percent, this particular area along Sturbridge Road has decreased by seventy-five percent. The chief wanted to add into this on his final line, that any efforts in addition to, to add additional spaces for patrons and parked cars, in order to lessen the number of static vehicles on Sturbridge Road and the driveway at Treehouse is definitely a positive step. They have, uh, worked closely with us, um, in trying to mitigate the traffic problems. And the business itself isn't what's creating these problems. It's the patrons that are exiting. And we've been obviously up, uh, upping our game in regards to, in educating and enforcing those patrons as to what they can and can't do. There is no way we could totally come up, uh, uh, plan to totally stop all the motor vehicle accidents. When we figure that out, we'll be very rich people, it's just, it, but, uh, so the chief, uh, should have emailed, uh, But, so the chief should have emailed a copy of this letter to the boards today, but those are the statistics have, as we had come up with just at the end of May.
Can I ask a question to Mr. McGrath as well? I mean, sorry. As well, I don't know if this goes to you or to Treehouse. It is amazing just how busy and how many people are going to Treehouse every day that they're open. It's awesome. And I can only imagine it is going to quadruple once the expansion goes in, so that's great news. My question is, is there any work, is there any news, is there any thought to putting a traffic light there?
Well, there hasn't been discussion, and I'm actually the chair of the Civilian Traffic Commission here in general. The Department of Transportation, the D O T, deals with everything that's on Route 20. We could suggest we could do whatever we want, but they're the final decision on erecting a light there or as they've done with the signs. And there has been discussion within the Traffic Commission as well as the Police Department with how to mitigate this. And Treehouse has been a part of those discussions with the D O T. As of right now, I don't think there are irony plans for a traffic light. There are other considerations in regards to the volume of traffic. Anyone tries to drive through there on certain hours, especially if there's backup in the Mass Pike, that would further congest that roadway. So I don't know what their analysis is, I don't know what they're going, but even if we all voted to put one up, they're the final, they're the final, yes, they say yea or nay.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions?
Has this plan been sent to Mass D O T for review at all, since they're adding more space, therefore adding more customers?
Not at this point, it is not, but that'll be part of, and it will be filed with NEPA at the end of this month, and the plans will be provided to D O T.
For comment? Okay. And then the front gravel driveway that's on the left when you pull in, have you guys done stormwater management on that yet? And the only reason why I ask is because if we have other applicants that have gravel driveways, roadways, and they've been required to provide stormwater. I know on the original plan, it was going to be what, a future pad site for another business?
Correct. And again, it was basically, there was an existing gravel sort of lay-down area that was there originally for the logging operation.
Yeah.
And the intent was never really to use this as parking initially, but it's sort of become sort of an overflow parking area currently. Our hope is basically, again, as a project, if this part is built, you know, this won't be necessary as that. And also as part of the planning process too, for some of the traffic mitigation, in case some of that may have to be changed, at this point, you know, there's really no plans to keep that as parking long-term. So at this point, you know, if, once this is constructed, the hope is this won't be needed. And that is only sort of a temporary change.
All right. Thank you.
So I'll open it up to the public. Please state your name and your address for the record.
Okay. I'm Nusa Demopoulos, 132 Sturbridge Road. I own Zorbas Pizzeria Tavern. It's wonderful, they're, you know, the expansion is great. My concern is the traffic. It's been put on my business, my customers. I did erect a barrier. I put it up because of the turning into my driveway, which is greatly affecting my customers. Even had a few children almost get hit a few times. But then I had to take it down because I had so many complaints from my customers, from my employees. It's already hard to get out. I feel like this is wonderful and I hope they keep expanding, but we have to do something about the traffic. It's really become a major concern. I have people who tell me, customers who tell me they won't come to my restaurant as often or because of the traffic. It's, you know, they're obviously a site that many people travel to from far away to come to Treehouse, which is wonderful. It increases the traffic, but I don't know if the studies were done properly or the Department of Transportation, you know, because I had heard that from a state official that said they underestimated the amount of cars, that it wasn't done, you know, they felt like they had to re, you know, examine the whole process. And I'd like to let it be known formally, ask them to put a light or have a light put in for this expansion. I think it'll be better for all of us and hopefully Route 20 will continue to grow. But we have to have some foresight because we already have issues. We already have a lot of complaints from people, you know. I mean, I've been there, opened thirteen years, I've actually owned the property for, you know, since nineteen eighty-eight. You know, I just want it to be contingent on a light.
So you're on the record, but honestly, we have no, it's all MassDOT. It's all.
Right, I understand that.
We have, we can, you can write letters to them, you can call them.
Which I've done.
Maybe that will nudge them along.
Which I've done.
But we have.
But, you know, putting cones, I mean, the first day, they were, had a detail that was letting people cross Route 20. That's how crazy it was. I mean, he was stopping, you know, people travel seventy miles an hour on that road, you know. It just felt like it was very disorganized for the, for the project, which is certainly a massive project, wonderful project. You know, I just feel like this town should have some foresight and assist for the Mass Department of the.
I think all of us would love.
Yes.
A traffic light there.
Yes.
I go to your restaurant.
Thank you.
Often, and I, that would be great. We have no say, it'll be on the record. But you did hear that they were, they are working on trying to fix the issues as best they can.
I just don't think it's proportional, you know.
I think that, I think Treehouse is trying to handle the problem in anything under their control, I feel that they've been working on.
Oh, sure.
And your comments will be on the record.
Right.
But there is nothing, and we have written letters and we've done everything we could to make that happen, but right now.
You know, I just know that like we're on Route 20, when the girl got in accident and got killed and her child got killed, that's when they did something. And I'd hate to see something like that happen. And we've had accidents that have been fatal on Route 20 in front of my restaurant too for many years. And I just feel like we're looking for a situation that something's bad's going to happen before something gets done.
I think everybody in this room agrees, again.
Exactly, I was going to say.
Contact, contact the state, they're.
I have, and they've been great. They've come in. I think, you know, it's always issue of money and this and that, maybe if there was some type, I don't know. Anyway.
The more they get bothered, the more.
Exactly.
The more it gets their attention. So you and all your friends and everybody else write a letter.
Right.
Name and address.
If I can, if I can add, this is my mother, we're, I'm also.
Name and address.
Oh, I'm sorry, Theodopolis, 132 Sturbridge Road, Zorbas. I wanted to ask, is 169 as well an issue of a state like Mass.gov? Is that another state road?
It's a state road.
Okay. Because I do believe that a lot of the backup on Route 20, we've been seeing even prior to Treehouse coming in, you know, and I think a lot of that has to do with it bottlenecking into one lane right at 169.
Absolutely.
And I didn't know if maybe, if that was ever proposed to.
Again, contact.
So that's more of a state issue.
Exactly.
Letter, email, the more they get bothered, the more they'll look at it. Other than that, we.
They don't live in Charlton, right.
We've contacted, we've, we've written letters.
And for the record, we have seen that it has improved, you know, I think with the extra hours that they're open and probably just spreading it out more, so, right.
Right.
But yeah, it's definitely been a concern, you know what I mean?
Thank you, and you're on the record, so we, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Any other comments?
Russ Jennings, 47 Jennings Road. Just a couple of questions. How many parking spaces do you guys currently have now?
Currently, it's a hundred and fifty-eight.
A hundred and fifty-eight?
Paved parking places.
Paved parking places. And with the new proposal, how many would you then have total?
Two hundred and ninety-one.
Two ninety-one. Okay. Thank you. And good job. Doing a good job. Thanks for coming to Charlie.
Continue.
We're just trying to find a, we just, just so everybody knows what we're whispering about over here, we are just trying to find a date because we're packed solid for June twentieth, so we're just trying to find. We, we. Do we want to add that, do we want to add a meeting, another meeting in July because we, we're packed for June twentieth, we're packed for July eleventh? Do we really, do we want to add another summer?
Make sure or else we're going to be here until.
Even if it's specifically for you guys.
Want to end another, add another one at the end of June?
No, July.
July.
End of July. Would it be the twenty-fifth?
We already have the two.
Be the twenty-fifth?
And Jane's on vacation, we won't have.
Would it be the twenty-fifth or the eighteenth? Or we add one in July?
Do you want to just?
We have one on the eleventh in July right now.
Just July eleventh.
Yeah, what if we add one, which one would it be?
Do you want to just do the eighteenth and make it earlier as possible or do we want to separate it?
I'm fine with the eighteenth.
All right, like, don't we, you gotta make a motion to add a July meeting to July eighteenth? Like to make a motion, we add a meeting in July to July eighteenth.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So.
And we will continue this to July eighteenth?
Do we have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion, we continue this public hearing through July eighteenth.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
What are your hours now?
The hours of operation for us.
Yes.
I'm Kim Glinsken, the office manager. Our hours of operation are Tuesday from four to eight, Wednesday, Thursday and Friday from noon to eight, and Saturdays we are open from eleven to seven. With more plans for more hours, more expansion as we create, we'll be here and we obtain more retail staff. We run really lean and part of the problem is getting more people to work for more hours. So we're working on that as we do interviews every day, just to get a hold of our staff. So we're working on it.
Good job.
So now it's on, now it's on live TV, everybody, you'll get all sorts of applications.
I missed what you said on that. Were you hiring more people?
Yes.
And you just had a free ad on live TV.
Thank you, gentlemen, I know it's.
Thank you. Oh, Jessica, being so late.
It's very visible too.
Okay. I have.
We.
I almost feel like we should add a special meeting just to discuss the town planner. And I know, I mean, we can discuss it all day long, but I almost feel like it warrants its own hour, hour and a half.
So we, I have a letter asking for a continue. I have a letter from Katie Goldstein from Meridian Associates to continue, they just aren't ready for tonight, the forty-fourth Worcester Road project. Jane, nice to speak to you this morning. I am ready to confirm our request for continuation to the, to June twentieth meeting as well as our appointment to submit revised preliminary subdivision plans to the planner on June twelfth at 1:00 PM. Please let me know if you need any further information from me. Katie Goldstein.
Could I request clarification about the continuance of the subdivision review? I'm Noreen Smith, I live at Dresser Hill Road in Charlton, and it was publicly posted that the planning board had formally approved the construction of a one point five million square foot facility.
No.
On a, I mean, just clarify, continue, on a construction bidding website where the owners of that future proposed facility put out and in their first line said, "As of May thirty-first, twenty eighteen, the Charlton Planning Board has approved this project." So that is on a public construction bidding site, and I'm just asking you, please clarify.
Do you know what site it's on?
Yes, we sent it to the Town Select.
Would you send it to Jane's that we can review it?
What is it, bid docs or Dodge?
Thanks for bringing that forward.
Thank you.
So if you could clarify that this is.
Yeah, it's false information.
By the planning board, that would be very helpful.
Yeah, we haven't, we haven't.
We'd like to make sure that that happens on the record.
Just because some.
Because there are no minutes for these meetings either, so you can go on and verify on the town website that any of this did or didn't take place. And when the videos don't work, you can't look back and find out whether it did or didn't take place. But when it's publicly advertised, it's a significant problem.
Construction, I never heard of this company. Construction, construction data company?
I think what they're mixing up, and Mike, you can.
They're always wrong.
Okay.
I've never heard of them.
I get calls from them all the time. I think. I think our concern is, it seems like at every step, there's a mix-up or we didn't do this or something wasn't followed through or at the, at the special town meeting or the selectman's meeting last Tuesday, they said that the, there's been no plans or anything that they haven't.
Keep that for records, Michelle.
Before you vote.
Correct. That's correct. And unfortunately, through the chair, there is a lot of bad information online, a lot, a lot, a lot.
This is a construction proposal site.
Oh, I just mean, all over the place. And the planning board has been blamed multiple times for approving things that we haven't even seen yet. They have not come before us. And so your best bet is either to call, and I hate to flood it, but to either call the planning board office and ask or to watch the meetings or come to the meetings, because there's so much, because what's happening is bad information perpetuates bad information. And so people will read a few things and then they say more things, and in reality, none of this is, a lot of it isn't true.
They add a lot on Facebook, too.
Yes.
But this is not Facebook.
Right, right. But this is, we have no control over this.
Yeah, this is just.
We don't have a control over it.
I understand that, but you should be fully aware of what's being said.
We appreciate it.
We appreciate it. Thank you for the information. And I, and I, at this point, I guess we can, the selectmen now know and we could book and maybe they have taken care of it by now.
Right.
Yeah, we sent it, I sent it to the select.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
And if you see anything further like that, or if you ever have questions, you're welcome to email us and we will respond to you.
And could I recommend that the planning board, you have a number of people who are on computers and making notes, that you actually take minutes and post them on the public website? It would alleviate a lot of the confusion about what is and isn't discussed in the course of the meeting because your agendas change, so.
We do take minutes every meeting. Jane's kind enough to take our minutes. It's just a matter of getting them posted.
And we've been absolutely swamped and, and she's doing the job, the partial job of our planner too. So we have a lot going on.
I'm not blaming Jane, I'm suggesting that's a good way to do this.
Truly noted.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you for the information.
Thank you. And thank you for sitting through the entire meeting to bring that to our attention.
And we'll potentially see you on the twentieth.
We'll see you on the nineteenth?
Twentieth.
We're the twentieth and I believe the selectmen are the nineteenth.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So do we want to have a quick discussion on the, the update of the posting of the planning director? So we all saw what happened at the town meeting, we have funding. The, if you look at the budget, the budget actually says, "Planning Director slash EDC Director" on the budget, so that's, that's this position. It, correct me, where it's posted, currently posted, do we know where it, all the places it was posted?
I just know it's posted, I have.
Okay, so I had, last time we had the issue that it wasn't posted for very long on all of the actual planner sites. It was just posted in regular, the regular newspaper, so can.
Do they also use all the online Monster indeed, or is it just on the planning?
I have honestly no clue.
No idea.
Last time, it was posted in the local paper.
Yeah.
So would you?
It was CMRPC.
And I did the same thing. I had emailed CMRPC also with a couple of other places.
Could you? Could you?
But I just have one clarification here. This is the same ad that we ran before, identical. And it says in this ad, is responsible, that the planning director is responsible for maintaining, okay, provides, I'm sorry, provides staff assistance to the EDC by attending EDC meetings and working directly with the EDC chairman and his members. Now, is that still going to stay in there?
As on the budget, it was approved that our planner is also the EDC director.
Okay, then we should put slash up here, planning director slash EDC?
And according.
That's where we got nailed before.
Because according to the right.
And I don't want to make the same mistake again, because we got criticized.
This is already posted, but I think because it.
But this hasn't been posted in the newspaper yet, and it hasn't been, it's only posted in the town hall.
Okay. And Jessica wants that big EDC director, I mean, to Jane's point exactly, Jessica wants that big EDC description, economic development director position posted along with this, in the same ad, so that we are very clear. So that way they know what.
It's.
It's one position, but that way they know.
Okay.
This describes what a planner does. They also want it described as what an EDC director does. As, in other words, these are all your responsibilities.
Right, and they overlap very much, so.
You're one person.
Not a huge, it, it's just kind of complete in the whole picture.
Full understanding, full disclosure, sure.
And there's not a, I mean, how many meetings?
So that will be just this ad, it will be this plus.
Correct.
What the EDC description is.
From my information, how many meetings does the EDC actually have? Like, is it?
At one time, they were once a month, and they went to once every two months, then they went to almost non-existently when Alan left. So it is all a matter of how often the town planner calls it. For a long time, it was every month, and it's like the second or third Monday of the month.
I'm sure that we'll all work together to kind of.
Absolutely.
Figure out exactly what we think. Obviously, we're overwhelmed, and we, we want to catch up, but.
Shouldn't that, those EDC meetings come from the request of the, of the board, or the, not the planning director? I would think that he works for the board, not the board for him.
But it's an aside.
This is where there was an issue in the past. Because the EDC director, per se, reports to the selectmen, and because the planning director does not, the selectmen wanted to be able to call the EDC meetings. And so then it came into one position, and this is still a struggle, because in the past, Alan always called the meetings. He didn't consult with the selectmen, he just called the meetings, because he was the planner. So I don't know how that's going to go going forward, and I can only imagine there might be some discussion around that.
Can you and I meet with Robin about that?
Yes, yes.
So I think that it makes sense to come up with a, a schedule.
Absolutely.
Once a month, and with set dates, so our planner knows when there's going to be a meeting. There's no calling. If the, if the meeting's going to be ten minutes, because there is not much to discuss.
Perfect.
Then, then so be it. Does that make any sense?
That does, and we have a meeting Monday.
So it doesn't, so, so you guys can, you'll, you'll verify with them, but does that make?
That makes perfect sense.
And you'll introduce that.
Absolutely. And that way, too, by posting it maybe six months in advance, everybody knows exactly when they are. And if a planning board member wants to go since their open meetings, they can do that as well.
Which makes.
Right.
Perfect sense, because our, our role kind of.
Are so overlapping, that's correct.
So awesome, that's perfect. And, and we'll move ahead with that process. Everybody's good for that.
Yep, makes sense.
Yeah.
And you guys can discuss.
The other job, the other portion descriptions.
And you guys will talk at the meeting, what, like, if this is, if you want to do a particular, particular time.
Correct.
And set the schedule for the whole future.
Perfect. And that way, the selectmen still feel that they're, they have that power, which is something that they truly wanted, and that's, that's fine. I don't care when the meetings are.
And the ability to notice.
Exactly, right.
When exactly, when, perfect, perfect. All right, so we, so we'll change, we'll just put the slash EDC director, and ask Jessica to add that to the top, and then we'll get this posted. Jane, you'll make sure that it gets sent.
CMRPC.
To CMRPC, because you're our, our big contact there. And if anybody else has any, any contacts, you know, of, of plan directors in the state or anything else, share, because we want to, as, you know, as much attention.
Do we know what our competition is out there right now? Do we know how many other cities and towns in the area, or?
We pulled that.
Interesting fact to know. So I went.
It is.
My daughter graduated from college a couple of weeks ago, and Westfield has a planner, a, like, they, they new planners graduated, and all, there was a humongous auditorium full of kids, and there were five planning majors.
Worcester State has a, a planning major too, city planning major.
So it's such a small, it's just, it's just a small, special issue. And, and honestly, we're going to be kind of taking from somewhere else, because we need somebody who's experienced. So it's just a matter, it's kind of like school superintendents, they get kind of.
Exactly, exactly.
Full of morale.
They, you know. So, perfect, perfect. I guess we don't have Bill here to talk about any girlfriend, or any other discussion, or anything else that we want to bring up.
Nope.
I'm good.
And just because it's so late, I know we have to talk about restructuring our board and stuff. Let's just do that at the next meeting. We'll make sure that we talk about that at the next meeting. We'll get that out.
Exactly. Yeah, totally agreed.
Yep.
So do, anything else? Wait, do I have a motion?
No motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.